Good evening. Welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five School Board Public Hearing and Work Session. The time is now five thirty P M. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the role?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran is excused. Ms. Julian?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you.
Next up, we will move into our public hearing, our public testimony on school consolidation. Each person who has signed up in advance will have three minutes to testify. If we get through early signups, we will continue testimony until the one hour time limit. We have a new system here in place for timing of testimonies in our boardroom. You will notice the clock behind me and the one in the back of the boardroom. When the timer starts, you will notice a green light lit. When the testifier has thirty seconds remaining on the three-minute time, the light will turn yellow to notify the testifier and others that it is time to wrap up your testimony. Tonight, for the sake of treating this as an agenda item, as it will be here in the future, board members will be permitted to ask clarifying questions. Board members, please only ask questions if needed and keep them as short as possible so that we may get through as many testimonies as possible tonight. And with that, our first person up for testimony will be Jay Millian. If you could please state your first name, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jay and my last name is Millian, M I L L I O N. So, thank you, good evening, School Board. I'm here to speak to you on truth and doing the most good for the most students. The administration has proposed consolidating five schools based on building status, cost savings, and neighborhood impacts. However, those reasons do not make sense when considering to repurpose Midnight Sun Elementary. Regarding cost savings, the administration states it will save one point five million. In an email from February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Dr. Minor outlined that closing Tick Brown would save over one point six million. The decision to repurpose Midnight Sun Elementary in lieu of closing Tick Brown results in less cost savings. Regarding building condition, Midnight Sun Elementary has had a recent building expansion, large DODA technology grant, and an updated boiler. Tick Brown has arguably the worst building condition at not only North Pole, but in the entire district as outlined in that same email from Dr. Minor, where it was recommended foreclosure because, quote, "building condition was the largest factor driving the recommendation due to it needing a new DDC system, fire panel, water conditioning, parking lot erosion, and water drainage," end quote. Regarding neighborhood impacts, the entirety of over five hundred Badger Road public school students who do not have the privilege to choose where they receive their education would be sloughed into a dilapidated building that less than a year ago was recommended foreclosure due to poor building condition. The administration is gifting the nicest building in North Pole to sixty-some Star of the North students at the expense of over five hundred public school students. This is systemic inequity. The public can see that this repurposing is a disingenuous proposal as the data provided by the administration does not substantiate their deceptive narrative. This proposal does not do the most good for the most students. This proposal was designed to deceptively maintain and promote systemic inequity. This proposal is in direct opposition to your mission statement recited earlier, quote, "to provide equitable education in a safe environment," end quote. According to your mission statement, it is your duty to stop the repurposing of Midnight Sun Elementary. Do not become the designers of systemic inequity. Become the heroes who save over five hundred students from systemic inequity. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. If you could just give just a minute. Board, do we have any clarifying questions? Okay, thank you so much. Next up for testimony, Shawna Henderson. Good evening. If you state your name, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Shawna Henderson, H E N D E R S O N. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I have thought long and hard about testifying this evening. I want the district to be successful, and I understand the realities we are facing. And I am also a believer, when you love something, you stand up for it. I teach my own children to do the same, and in the leadership role of Pearl Creek, I feel it is important to consider all of the possibilities. As many of you may already know, I'm a former Pearl Creek student. I am a current Pearl Creek parent, and I'm the current school principal. So as you can imagine, I am deeply committed to the Pearl Creek community. I am aware of the grave situation the school district faces in terms of budget deficits. I know the School Board has a very challenging job to decide the best course of action moving forward in light of those obstacles. And in my day-to-day job as a school principal, I am solution-oriented when faced with an obstacle or challenge. And it is with the same mindset that I am here tonight to present an alternate idea or solution for consideration. I would like the School Board to consider turning Pearl Creek Elementary into a magnet school. The magnet school focus would be science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. Historically and currently, we have strong foundational relationships with U A F and other outside organizations. The K five magnet school option, different from the current K eight option, would not cost the district any additional funds as we would still operate under the school district while retaining our school boundary area students, transportation, and special education programs. However, we could open our doors to a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty more students outside of our boundary area and invite them to be a part of our robust academic program. If we were given the opportunity to build on our current success, I am hopeful we could bring families who homeschool or are in private school to the district. This would help with our funding stream and could potentially stop the outward migration of students that is currently trending. The magnet school would also give parents choice, which strongly aligns with the governor's agenda and potentially could secure more money from the state. Undoubtedly, public education is facing some very tough times. However, with some outside-the-box thinking and creative solutions, I feel the Pearl Creek could continue to serve the district and our greater community in a different capacity as a magnet school. We could secure additional funding to appeal by appealing to students who might not be in the public school system. We could create an alternative educational experience that would bring in more money from the state and perhaps from the borough and outside agencies. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Henderson. Up next, we have Audra Hull. If you can state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
My name is Audra Hull, H U L L. I wear many hats in my life, one of those is mother of six, three of which attend Hunter. Today, my comments are not about my children. That hat I wear, the hat I wear now is an advocate for the diverse group of students that Hunter serves. Before I go on, there are some in attendance that wish to express their support for Hunter, for keeping Hunter open. Will those with me please raise your hand? The population of Hunter is made up of several minority groups. Fifty-two percent of Hunter is made up of ethnic minorities. The student population of Hunter has forty-five point nine percent that are Alaska Native and American Indian. That's the highest enrollment at any elementary in the district. We have thirty-three point nine percent of students that have a disability. Hunter has sixty-three point seven percent of students that are considered economically disadvantaged. As of December, Hunter was at sixty-seven percent Title One students. That's ten percent higher than any other elementary school in the district. At Hunter, the majority are the minorities. Students at Hunter benefit from many programs, including the longest and largest after-school program. A S P is not offered at all Title One schools or all elementary schools in the district. Hunter receives the largest portion of Title One funding, which comes from the federal government, which provides an additional behavior technician, an instructional coach, seven classroom tutors, and the funding for family events and activities. Hunter has an Alaska Native education tutor, which not all schools have. Hunter has the Alaska Rises Program, which is one of only two elementary schools that has this program, and this year, the other elementary doesn't offer it. Hunter has a full-time clinician at the school. The students are seen based on a referral process that involves the parents every step of the way. The clinician sees students that struggle with many things, including suicidal ideation, having a parent who is incarcerated, having experienced the death of a parent in foster care and struggling, having families experiencing homelessness or unstable housing, or have extreme behavioral needs. This program is funded through a grant. There is no financial cost to families who qualify for the service. They have to qualify for a free and reduced lunch, which is Title One, and be in need of clinical support. Kids are called down to the office for their appointments during the school day, so families do not have to pull them out of school, transport them across town, and bring them back. It's important to note that she is a clinician, not a counselor. Her skill set is beyond what our school counselor can support with, can support students with. While she does provide counseling services, she can also support with diagnosis of mental health issues or refer kids for more services if needed. Hunter has the added benefit of being on the same block as Ryan and Lathrop. There are families that rely on older siblings that attend these schools to take care of their younger siblings. We have many families that are able to walk to school. Losing the support of family by sending these kids to a different school would be an unnecessary hardship for families that are already struggling. Closing Hunter, Hunter would extinguish all of these unique supports that have been built for these already vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none at this time. Thank you, Ms. Hull. Up next, we have Rhonda Schlumpom. Um, I think she's on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Rhonda. Go ahead, state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Rhonda Schlumpom, S C H L U M B O H M. Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Salch Elementary. Though I recently retired after twenty-six years, I'm here for the children who attend this exceptional school. Salch is one of the top-performing yet lowest socioeconomic schools in our district, and it thrives because of our community and our commitment to honor place and families. Despite having a poverty rate of averaging forty-seven point three percent over the last twenty-three years, higher than other schools like Tick and U Park, our students consistently excel. Last year's third graders outperformed the district by thirteen percentage points in the proficient and advanced categories on the A K Star Test. Deed has reported Salch as a five-star school for more than a decade. Let's think about this. These are children with a high poverty rate, outperforming the district. Why? This success stems from our culture. We believe that children should be outside, learn about their environment, and be respectful to others. We have a long history of valuing high academic outcomes through the expectation that all kids can succeed. After all, one of our mottos is, all our kids are all our kids. The school is a hub for families. From concerts and after-school activities to food box deliveries and holiday support for families in need, Salch connects people and works to lift them up. For eighteen years, local churches and Salch store, along with the staff in Salch Rescue, have delivered food boxes to families in need. Salch students are deeply tied to their environment. They learn about our local Salchaket Native history, nature on our trails, and water quality on the Piledriver Slough. These experiences, unique to Salch, foster a sense of belonging and connection to their home. Closing Salch would sever these ties. Programs like the Ski Club, which has the goal of helping to train students to Olympic levels, would end. Families would face hardships with longer travel times, adding three more buses, costing the district more. Above all, students would lose their connection to their community and peers. I've heard of plans to turn Salch into a best satellite for homeschoolers. Why heat the building for one teacher? Instead, make Salch a hub for homeschool families and keep the school open. I urge you to explore the cost-saving measures. Could the central office be repurposed or rented out? Scattering central office staff into schools could reduce the costs and bring leaders closer to the communities they serve, sending a message that students come first, not closing a high-poverty school. Salch is more than a school. It's a place where children thrive because of the strong connections to our culture. It's a good place to grow, and I ask you to prioritize students honoring the district's mission statement of equity for all by keeping it open. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Schlumpom. Up next, we have Nikki Iseman. State your name, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Nikki Iseman, E I S E M A N. I was here a couple of weeks ago and said that, no matter how well we did this, it was gonna tear the community apart. And sadly, well, not tearing us apart, but it's a tough time. I'm somebody who always wants as much information as possible, and I appreciate everything that the board and administration is doing to answer questions, but I would love to see even more opportunities here. This is just one way. We're telling you what we think, but we're not getting answers. The listening sessions are listening sessions, and it's like, I'll get that, I'll get back to you. So I would love, I have lots of ideas about ways that more answers could be provided. I've also taken it upon myself to, just out in the community, listen to things that keep being asked and dug around and got some answers, so this is for the people behind me that hopefully will answer some questions. It costs about, I mean, these are tragic, some of these things. Okay. It costs about twice as much to educate a student in Salch and Two Rivers as it does at one of our bigger in-town schools. What percentage has been cut from downtown administration in the last five years? About twenty percent cuts to downtown administration. There was a one point six million increase to the admin budget this last year. The vast majority was for healthcare costs. Why the February fourth deadline? So that administration has enough information to submit budget proposals on February seventeenth so that staff and families can start working on transition plans, and so the board has time to work through any additional cuts ahead of April first. What's the cost of keeping Nordale open? Two hundred and twenty thousand, which is utilities and a half-time custodian. So we'd still be paying a hundred and fifty thousand to keep it open just for utilities. Past budgets can be found on the district website, dot org slash about slash budget. Moving the school, I mean, moving central office. Apparently, it would cost millions, retrofitting classrooms to be offices, retrofitting a space to be the boardroom. I'm gonna end quoting myself from a community perspective I wrote. I'm not saying this won't be hard, or the next month or year won't bring many challenges, but at the end of it all, we can be even stronger than we are now. We have to choose to make it so. Yes, advocate for your schools, but also be willing to envision what can be. When School Board members cast their votes in February, we can go forward kicking and screaming. Or as residents of the Golden Heart Community, as we have so often done, we can go forward with resilience, creativity, and compassion.
Appreciate your testimony. Thank you. Any questions from the board? I'm sorry. Not seeing any. Okay. Up next, Allison Mogensen.
Name is Allison Mogensen, M O G E N S E N. Good evening, School Board members. Thank you for your time and consideration as we discuss ways to improve our district. I'd like to talk to you about schools of choice. I know schools of choice are wanted and needed. The numbers are there. Two years ago, we tried to get my kindergartner into watershed. There were seventeen spots already taken by siblings of current students, so this left five remaining spots. We did not get chosen in the lottery. Last year, with all the news of school closures, we entered him into the lottery in case our school was closed. He was not selected in the lottery and was, I believe, sixty-five out of sixty-seven on the waitlist. That means that there are at least sixty-seven families in that specific grade that are looking for alternative settings for their students, and that's just one grade. I imagine it's similar in the other grade levels as well. This demonstrates that the need for another school of choice in our district is much needed. What our district needs to do is increase enrollment. How do we do this? Not by cutting neighborhood schools. This is only going to push more families to homeschool and private school. I can tell you, our family would either homeschool, which would also mean that you're losing a teacher, as I would be the one staying home to school my children. The need for more schools of choice is real. If you close these five schools, I can almost guarantee that families from Pearl Creek, Salch, and Two Rivers are going to either homeschool for the further-out communities or utilize homeschool and private school for the closer schools. By shutting these schools down, you will be losing more students, mine included, and thus losing more money. Please keep Pearl Creek open as a magnet school. It is the most sought-after school in the district. According to the district data, Pearl Creek has the highest and most consistent parent rating of any school, sitting high at the letter grade of A. Please look at the graphs that I will provide for you. Flip through the graphs for each school. Please note that I have also omitted schools with less than five responses. When you see Pearl Creek, it stands out and it speaks for itself. It's a majority of dark blue, indicating it's getting a grade of A and has been consistently doing so since at least twenty seventeen. I would say that Pearl Creek is the most sought-after school in the district. We bought our house in the Pearl Creek attendance area before we even had children with the idea that our kids would be puffins and would get that strong education. We aren't the only ones who specifically bought a house in the, just to be able to go to Pearl Creek. Pearl Creek is the most sought-after school in the district and has the highest and most consistent parent ratings, even above some of the charter schools. How is this good business sense to shut down something that is working well for the district, something that is bringing in positive reviews and brings in strong testing scores? Please let us try and keep Pearl Creek as a magnet school. It will bring people back to the district, it will increase enrollment, and it will bring in more money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions?
Is it okay if I bring you guys the graphs?
If you can give it to Mrs. Richardson right there? Thank you. Up next, we have Jacqueline Muehlbauer. State your name, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Jackie Muehlbauer, M U E H L B A U E R. Good evening, members of the School Board. I'm a resident of Farmer's Loop. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight for all of us and about the proposed school closures in our district. I understand the financial challenges all of us face. This is, I think, a community decision. These decisions are not easy. However, I have to voice my concern that closing neighborhood schools will have long-term consequences for our students, families, and community that far outweigh this short-term savings. I would like to address the role of charter schools in these discussions. While I understand that charter schools operate under contracts, I think it's important to reassess the full ramifications of breaking those contracts. Would the cost of closing charter school buildings exceed the savings from closing neighborhood schools? More importantly, I urge the board to consider the message that is being sent when a charter schools are prioritized over neighborhood schools, which serve the majority of our students and provide vital stability to their communities. Second, I'm concerned about the use of deed capacity as a justification for closures. Many schools have operated below eighty-five percent capacity for decades, and this metric doesn't reflect real-world conditions or optimal learning environments. Long-term enrollment trends provide a far more accurate guide for decision-making. Finally, I question whether these closures truly address the district's financial challenges. Closing five schools will save seven million dollars annually, but that still leaves a six-million-dollar shortfall. How can we claim this plan is sustainable when it only addresses a part of the problem? Meanwhile, the district's twenty-five-year budget, fiscal year twenty-five budget, includes a one point nine million dollar increase in administrative costs, a fifteen percent jump. Are we really prioritizing classrooms over bureaucracy? Probably the other way around. We need a comprehensive plan that protects neighborhood schools and prioritizes equity. School closures should be a last resort, not a first step. I urge the board to reconsider these proposals and explore more equitable and sustainable solutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Muehlbauer. Up next, we don't see her on Zoom. Do we have Kristin Pap in the audience? Fantastic. If you can state your name, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
My name's Kristin Pap, P A P P. And, oh, I guess Farmer's Loop area. I just want to thank the board. I know this is a really tough, crappy situation to be in, but this is where we are. And I'm really sad that my school, I went to school at Pearl Creek, and my kids are there. And I'm really sad that my school, I went to school at Pearl Creek and my kids are there. This is on the list again, but I understand. I understand the weight of what's going on. I, it's a tough, yeah, it's a tough decision to be making. But I want to preserve our quality teaching in our classrooms. I want our community to have good, good consolidated education. So anyways, thank you. I'm really inarticulate at the moment, so I'll get to my point. What I wanted to comment on the redistricting, it looks like Pearl Creek is being redistricted to three major schools, four if you count Weller. So what I was hoping was maybe those redistricting could be looked at as maybe two major schools. I don't know if that is a possibility, instead of breaking up the school into three or four. Those four students that go to Weller, perhaps there's some grandfathering rights, maybe, that they could be at one of the other schools just to be, you know, with their friends. But also just thinking, a lot of Pearl Creek parents work on the west side of town. That makes it hard for parents to be involved in their school, be volunteering if they're, you know, completely on the opposite side. I don't know that particular family circumstances, but I guess I was just wondering if there are options for some grandfathering rights for situations like that. And I guess another possibility was, I looked at some of the redistricting for existing schools. There's some kids that are at U Park that might be redistricted to Weller. Maybe there's some options for those fifth graders, maybe, to finish at their homeschool. But keeping your new district plan for new families, but maybe that just gives, you know, everybody a little bit more option with everything switching and moving, maybe that eases a little bit for the community. So those were just my hopes, maybe that could be discussed tonight with the redistricting plan. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the board? Not seeing any. Thank you so much. Up next, we have Jane Bedford. You can state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Jane Bedford, B-E-D-F-O-R-D. First, I want to thank the board for their service and acknowledge the difficult position that we're in. Financially, I understand the challenge, and I appreciate the work that everyone has put in over the last three years in an effort to kind of right the ship. As many of you know, I'm the principal of Hunter Elementary. You have seen me at school consolidation work sessions over the last two go-arounds, as I do stay informed. As a longtime district employee, I've witnessed many difficult decisions made by the board, seen many strategic plans put in place, and seen gains and losses across the board in buildings and programs. I've watched boards listen to and respond to the voices of the community. I have heard it said, "We want to hear the community, we serve the community." I disagree a little bit with that statement, and tonight I want to speak about the community we don't hear from, the people we truly serve in public education. And that would be the voice of our kiddos, Hunter kiddos, my kiddos, your kids, and the adverse childhood effects they experience as part of their daily lives. Of the 333 students, roughly 44 or 45% are Alaskan Native or American Indian. Our population is 68%, or 226 students Title I, which means they already live with our adverse childhood effects. 44 students are intensive resource or pre-K students who cannot advocate for themselves, and several of those were displaced in the closing of Joy two years ago. More adverse childhood experiences. 6% of our students are in foster care, which does not include those in tribal custody or living with family members. 5% are identified McKinnon Vento, and those are the ones that we know about. All of these situations compound those adverse childhood experiences. Yet in spite of it, our kids showed 16.4% growth last year in reading. Now we're talking about adding more to those effects and those experiences by closing the one place that is a constant, their school. We're talking about busing them across town, where it will be difficult for their families to access the school. As a board, I would ask that you make those difficult decisions fully informed, hearing from the people you serve and we serve, our kids. This is not about one school being better than any other school. We have great schools in this district. This is about ensuring we can, sorry, don't do this. This is about ensuring we continue to serve an underserved population, students who have already experienced enough and do not need another adverse childhood experience working against them.
Thank you, Mrs. Bedford. Is there any questions from the board? Not seeing any. Thank you so much. On Zoom, we have Jessica Wagner.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ms. Bedford, made me cry. My name is Jessica Wagner, it's W-A-G-N-E-R. I am a Fairbanks resident. Here we are, third round of closures, and the administration is only recommending addressing over 60% of our deficit. We have too many elementary schools. We can tell this not just by our budget, by the current capacities. One of the highest-rated schools in our community regarding test scores is at 100% capacity. Just wanted to point that out. In the first round of cuts, my son's school, Joy, was closed. And now the school he was relocated to is being recommended for closure. It's Hunter. I'm asking the board to pull the Band-Aid off. Stop doing these small surgeries that give no recovery time. I find it interesting how, from the beginning, resources have been taken away from families in public school to be given to families able to utilize the district's homeschool best. I understand that best program brings the district money. But think how much more money if the program didn't have a whole elementary school building or its functioning we could save. We still have $6 million to cut. I'm asking the board to question the administrators' input. Do your own due diligence. Think outside the box. I've emailed details, and you've heard some today about why Hunter may not be the best choice. And when I look at the slides, it's not very detailed. And you, it's not easily, you can't compare the schools. But please do not prolong this environment of instability. Make the best choices you can so we can cope, adapt, and recover. And I'm hoping Mr. Doran is okay, because he's on the Budget Committee. So I'm sorry he didn't make it today.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Mr. Burgess.
Are you aware that Mr. Doran is in South America on vacation, having a great time?
Oh, well, I don't feel sorry for him. I thought he was sick or hurt, but no.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wagner, for your testimony. Up next.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Allison Wild.
Hi, my name's Allison Wild, W-Y-L-D-E. I live in Two Rivers. I am the principal of Two Rivers School. Last year, when our school was on the closure list, we recognized the district's challenges in balancing the budget. I want to share how we've embraced the opportunity to be part of the solution and want to reimagine public education in rural areas. In response to last year's challenges, we adopted a homestead theme, diving into the roots of our community and building key partnerships to make learning both authentic and relevant for our students. These partnerships are the foundation of a plan we hope will support the district's long-term goals while preserving the unique character of our school and community. One Tree Alaska, a STEAM institute at UAF, collaborates with our staff and students on curriculum that includes Grinnell journaling, lessons on phenology, air quality, wildfire resilience, and sustainable resource use. These programs align with Alaskan life and foster lifelong learners. One Tree is working with us to explore grants in agroforestry, rural economic development, and professional development programs that could financially benefit our school and the district. With Fairbanks Soil and Water Conservation District, we're transforming our warm storage into a hydroponic science room by partnering with Fairbanks North Star Borough Nutrition Services and Lisa Murkowski's special appropriation funding. We also recently received a National Agriculture in the Classroom Grant to develop classroom growing systems. Our vision is to use the produce grown by our students for school lunches to sell greens to the community and ultimately launch a student-run farmer's market. These projects teach economics, address Alaska's food security needs, and opens doors to additional funding opportunities. Through the Two Rivers Pleasant Valley Fire Association, we've created a junior firefighting program, teaching leadership, life skills, and community responsibility to K-8 students. We envision deeper collaborations, which could include shared spaces with local nonprofits to support building maintenance and strengthen community ties. Our families started The Pact, a parent and community nonprofit that's already funded school-wide field trips and is pursuing 501(c)(3) status to broaden their reach. These initiatives reflect our commitment to the district's fiscal responsibility goals as well as student-centered education. While we recognize the district's challenges, we've just started this work and ask you to allow us to continue this path and pilot, be a pilot for others. Two Rivers and Salta are isolated and rural. We are more than rural schools. While Fairbanks serves as our hub, we are standalone communities that embody the essence of Alaska. We want to continue working together with the district to explore solutions that not only preserve our school, but also contribute to the sustainability and success of the entire system. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Wild. Up next, we have Stephen Rhodes. Do we have a Stephen Rhodes here? Not seeing him? Okay, we will come back. Next up, April Monroe. You can state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Sure, April Monroe, M-O-N-R-O-E. And I certainly want to open by also recognizing and expressing some gratitude for your service. I don't think anybody envies the seat you guys are sitting in tonight, probably even including the version of yourselves that signed up to be a school board member. I have had kids at Pearl Creek, I counted it out, 22 years, which is pretty crazy. So to pull that off, I was a teenage parent at Pearl Creek, been a foster parent at Pearl Creek, and now am, at least according to my doctor, a geriatric parent at Pearl Creek. So I just want to say that I have seen Pearl Creek from a lot of angles. And currently have got two kids there and one to go. And it's been a good environment for all of these kids. And I think that, I want to say something about Pearl, we all love our schools. Last year, I said that no elementary school should be considered for closure until we had deeply and seriously considered the closure of this building. And I want to echo that. The people who work here were the first ones to go home when COVID hit and the last to come back. They've demonstrated that those that are necessary can do their job remotely, and others can work inside our underpopulated schools. Programs like migrant ed and other direct student services don't have to be centralized here. They can be scattered into schools. And if we're talking about cramming our kids into 90% occupied buildings, we can have administrators be lightly uncomfortable in classrooms repurposed with cubicle walls into offices. I think that's really valid. I also want to echo comments that we have heard about the lack of transparency around the data that was used by the task force and the people who made up the task force. We know what their metrics were, but I can't reach and people who I respect can't reach the same conclusion with the metrics, right? Like busability, building age, building deficiency. You've heard that once, you're going to hear it again. And I think it's really important that you guys, the school board members, look to the people you're serving as the ultimate task force. I did want to share with you guys Pearl Creek data. My experiences as a Pearl Creek may have been anecdotal, but they're also backed up by data. You guys are talking about closing the most successful elementary school in the district, even when compared to charter schools. There's no school that is outperforming Pearl Creek by any measure. We did a survey of 64 family, Pearl Creek families that was taken last week. And of those, because they think this is a huge data flaw in this plan. So of those that responded, 11 said that they would take their kids to the school assigned if the closure proceeds. Nine will move out of State, two will move out of Fairbanks, echoing the biggest problem we have, which is outmigration, with education as the number one reason. And then 42 will attend a private charter or homeschool, that's 65%. That is fully 87% of the Pearl Creek population that intends to leave the district. So every calculation which presumes you're going to successfully redistribute these kids into other schools, I think, is fatally flawed. There is a list of kids that can't be accommodated every year to attend the best elementary school in our district. Making Pearl Creek into a magnet school is what is right for the children of this district. And the last consolidation demonstrated that Pearl Creek, as an environment, can elevate the scores of the incoming students. It is not about demographics, it's about the quality of education, which we can demonstrate in any way. So I would implore you to look at it as a magnet school.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Monroe. Any questions from the board? Up next, we have Shane Powers. If you can state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Yes, Shane Powers, P-O-W-E-R-S. So I have avoided taking sides the last two years in this budget issue. One, because as an introvert, this is pure torture for me right now, being up here. However, I have family in other schools, and advocacy for my family would directly impact my nieces and my cousins. With that said, is I don't believe this is a zero-sum fight for resources. I emailed all of you very lengthy stuff. That was what I did mostly this weekend. Is I have found a way to actually save some more money from the budget without the consequences. I was going to blast through some points here I have before I get to that. The first one I want to address, we do not have an enrollment problem, we have a confidence problem. And that is why most homeschool families I deal with routinely through my business voice to me. And I do believe that outcomes matter. And the governor and legislator have made clear the outcomes are mostly what matters to them. So closing the best-performing school in the district, one of the best in the states, in the state, really goes against that. And it really proves outcomes are not what's driving these decisions. I do want to challenge the metrics. When I go through them, I do not quite understand how those were applied and why they've changed so much since last year. I do also challenge the fact that we have U Park and Wood River. I have a property next to Wood River. I can see each school from my roof when I was shingling this summer. Why we can't have kids cross Chinapump Road, but Two Rivers and Salta are being gutted. So that one confuses me on that metric. The governor has made clear over and over again that he wants schools of choice and will butcher us to death with his veto if we don't comply, which is why I would push the term Pearl Creek into a magnet school, as that does meet a political agenda that is being pushed, right or wrong, that is what's being pushed. Magnet school can be done within months. A charter school, as you all know, takes years. The other thing is, on my last minute, I have a way to save 2 to 4 million from the budget. The Department of Defense has a rolling education system. It is a, they have 161 schools, a 3.4 billion with a B budget, and 15,000 employees with better test results than we have. We can hand LAD, Artic, Light, and Anarson over to the Defense Department. Those kids keep their schools, they keep their friends. Only thing that changes is the placard on the building. Doing the math on this, that's 77 employees, 1,241 students, with some non-military attending LAD. We, yes, we lose 7.3 million BSA, 1.4 million contract money, but between the buildings and these shuffling staff, we will save 2 to 3.3 million. With my math, doing gross estimates, I come close to 4 million. And no schools close. And that will close some of your gaps.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you so much. Up next, we have Russ Brovold. You can state your name, spell your last. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Russell Brovold, B-R-O-V-O-L-D. And thank you, guys, for listening to our testimony tonight. I have two reasons for saying no to closing Hunter Elementary. And they're both about saving money. First, capacity. Is it ridiculous? Is it ridiculous to say that a larger capacity school is more cost-effective to run? Comparing Hunter with the two nearby schools, Hunter is bigger. It has more student capacity, which makes it more cost-effective to run. Think of more students being taught by one music teacher, one PE teacher, one principal overseeing more students. Efficient staffing is just one of the ways that a larger school is more cost-effective to run. So financially, is it reasonable to close the larger school, Hunter, when it can teach more children for less money? Reason two, the walkability of Hunter. It keeps children safe and it saves money. Is it crazy to think that walking is cheaper than riding a bus? Hunter is walkable, to a higher density of students in their neighborhood. Now, added to that is safety. Is it reasonably safe for children to cross Airport Road? It's effectively a boundary line. To its north is a less dense neighborhood that is served by two smaller schools that cost more per student to run. Are either of those smaller schools closing? Does it make sense to take away Hunter's walkability, to bus all its students from Hunter's denser neighborhood to save money? So, to close, just one more question. Is it fiscally wise to close a more walkable school, higher-capacity school, that's more cost-effective to run? The answer is clearly no. Don't close Hunter Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you so much. Up next, we have Rosalie Hamilton. Do we have a Rosalie Hamilton? Oh, sorry.
Rosalie Hamilton, H-A-M-I-L-T-O-N. The little kids are gonna, to be super bored on the bus drive to a different school. I will be very sad if we get shut down. I won't want to, I don't want to be shut down because I really like this school. We should be, we shouldn't be shut down because this school is very fun and I like our after-school activities. We should get, shouldn't get shut down because I really don't want to ride a bus for over an hour. I feel that I won't have friends at a different school and that they will make fun of me. I really, I have really nice teachers and I think they will be sad too, since they like teaching us and I like that they are our teachers.
Up next, we have Cora Hamilton.
Cora Hamilton, H-A-M-I-L-T-O-N. That was my daughter, Rosalie. She is a current student out at Salcha Elementary. I, myself, am also a former student of Salcha Elementary. And I am a current staff member as a classroom tutor. That last one is the least of my concerns in regards to this potential school shutdown, closure, whatever you want to call it or paint it, consolidation. There are no pretty words for this, and unfortunately, you guys have all the data and you are looking at it as numbers instead of as people. Our community out in Salcha is a smaller community. Yes, it costs more for our students, per student, due to the governor's choices. This is a legislative issue, and choices here will impact our students at a personal level as well as their families. The potential move for us to go to Anderson Crawford is going to cause greater obstacles for a more marginalized community that already struggles with socioeconomic disadvantages. Yes, we live a more subsistence lifestyle out there, but that is because we are choosing to stay connected to our environment and our community. There are many people who have spoken out for Salcha that don't even have students or have ever had students that live in the area because they know what an impact it has on our community, as it is also a polling station, it is a Red Cross center place for when there's an emergency. Community events happen at our school as well as just our day-to-day schooling and places for children to feel safe. Every staff member at Salcha does far and above their own job. They are putting on multiple hats to make sure that everyone is covered and everyone is getting served in the manner that they can to increase their education and to help them succeed at what is necessary for this. I know that the budget is what it is. It is a severe deficit, and I don't think cutting it at a school level is beneficial. We should not be having to sit here and pit our schools against each other and to put our numbers against each other and go, well, our capacity is this, and our capacity is this, and our size is this, and it costs this. No, all of our students matter. All of these neighborhood schools matter. I am a previous employee of Hunter and of Arctic Light. I have seen how each of these schools run and how all of it has benefited students. It is hard for me to sit here and have to think about that these students in a rural community would be going to a military-based school. There's a big difference between them.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Is there any questions from the board? Seeing none. Up next, we have Michelle Ethan.
I guess you get both ends of the spectrum. My name is Michelle Ethan, E-T-H-U-N, and I am from Two Rivers. So I'm here as a Two Rivers resident, also the president of the Two Rivers Fire Association, a community partner with the Two Rivers School. I also want to say, this is not the first time I've been here. My kids went to Two Rivers. I feel like this is a consistent do-loop. I don't think we've solved anything. But I also understand the position that you're in. It's true that the fiscal problems the district faces are real. It's also true that rural schools face a disproportionate effect when families in their neighborhood schools exercise the options that they can take part in the multitude of alternative education opportunities that this state provides. When a family leaves a neighborhood school like that, those two or three students have an outsized impact on the attendance numbers. They're still part of our community, but they're just not counted where it matters. What I have seen that's different is the enthusiasm and the stick-to-itiveness of the Two Rivers Elementary School, the principal, the staff, and the parent association. That is different. As you heard, the principal recognized quickly that there needed to be a community focus to the school, a way to foster an open atmosphere regardless of students that are enrolled or if family attends another school or if they homeschool. She recognizes that Two Rivers needed to bring value back to our community, and I would argue that she has seen success. From school cooking classes, agricultural enrollment, gardening, family ski nights, one of my favorites, they've sought to bring real-life experiences and a new methodology to our education and our community. And that's where we come in. As a part of a community fostering, the school reached out to us as a local community organization to help partner and bring tangible life skills to students. So the Pleasant Valley, Two Rivers Fire Association partnered, we have a junior firefighter program. We go in once a month, second Wednesday of the month, we break the kids up, and we talk about real-life skills. They've learned how to call 911, they've learned how to do basic first aid, they've learned how to develop emergency plans, but mostly, they've learned about community, leadership, and a desire to serve. This last month, we asked every student to come up with three goals on how they can be a community leader. They've retained everything. Some of the goals were helping an elderly neighbor, removing dead leaves and grass from yards to keep from wildfires, or keeping the hallways clear in the school every single day to make sure that they're ready for an emergency. In April, the middle school kids will help us with the community health fair. Those are tangible skills. So while I understand and recognize the problem that you're facing, I implore you to work with the principal and that staff, understand what they've come to bring forward.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none at this time, thank you so much. Up next, we have Janice Dawe. You can state your names, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Janice Dawe, D-A-W-E. I live on the ridge between Farmers Loop and Belane Road. And I lead, I'm a research assistant professor at the university. I work for the Institute of Agriculture, Natural Resources, and Extension as part of the Agriculture and Forestry Experiment Station. And I've led One Tree Alaska, which is a K-20 community collaborative program from the university since 2009, but I have been an informal educator since before that, starting at Pearl Creek School in 1998. So it's a long time. And two proud puffins later, I continue there. But I'm here tonight to say that One Tree works on behalf of all of the students of the district and beyond, our school district. We do that primarily through professional development for K-12 teachers, who are, as we all know, heroes in working with our young. So while our mission is, at One Tree, is to engage learners of all ages, and we really mean that, from four to about 84 right now, in boreal forest education, citizen science, and forest product development. It's a strange sounding mission, but it works, and it's all because of the teachers of the North Star Borough. So we are this year partnering with Two Rivers, and in the past, we've done, we've partnered with each of the five schools that is slated for closure. I can't advocate for one beyond the other, except to say that the reason we are partnering right now with Two Rivers is because of the homestead program, which you've begun to hear about. It aligns perfectly with our STEAM mission, and we are looking at developing further the idea by making Two Rivers a lab and professional development school for the university, for our unit. So we're serious about these matters. These aren't, these are the direction that we're headed. But I agree with everyone here who said we are for all of the schools to somehow remain open, because each of these schools, especially the rural ones, and also Hunter, are true neighborhood place-based schools that are doing the best they can with their campus setting. And so, we work with them, with the forest, but we are looking forward to continuing to work across the district, whether it's with public charter, Title I, homeschool, or magnet. We've been in them all, and we hope to continue. Don't envy your position and wish you all the best in making decisions, but let's keep these schools open. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Up next, we have Kevin Salus. If I said that wrong, I'm sorry. If you can state your names, spell your last, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Kevin Salus, S-A-L-U-S. I am the current kindergarten and first-grade teacher at Salcha Elementary. It's my first year with the district. I previously taught in Kodiak. And I just want to remind everyone of the mission statement of this district, which is, "Our mission is to provide an excellent, equitable education in a safe, supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society." Now, equity is something that a lot of people have different definitions for, but I think the Fairbanks, on the Fairbanks website, their definition of equity, I think, is as good as Webster's, says, "Equity is fair treatment, access, opportunity, and advancement for all people, while at the same time striving to identify and eliminate barriers that have prevented the full participation of some groups. In order to improve equity, we must increase justice and fairness within the procedures and processes of institutions or systems, as well as in the distribution of resources. Tackling equity issues requires an understanding of the root cause of outcome disparities within our society." And when I see equity, I think of, you're closing the last two rural schools, you are not providing them with fair access to education. You are not eliminating barriers that are preventing the full participation of some groups. I feel like with the closing of Salcha and Two Rivers, I feel that rural communities are being targeted, and our students will not have the same opportunity to learn and to grow as students in the city have. I understand that we have, we have a major problem with the way funding is from the state, but I don't see that targeting rural communities is going to fix that problem. Yeah, when I, when I think of, when I think of our school closing, I think of kids who have to ride on the bus for, I don't know, it's going to be close to two hours, I think I saw, one way, for kids to go from, we have kids all the way out at the Birch Lake area who will then be bused to Ileson, I guess, every day. And then, I don't know, a lot of our community will not have base access to Ileson anyway, so that brings up another problem. I just, I don't see how it's feasible or even right to force kids out of their community to go to a school in a different community. North Pole and Ileson are not the same community as Salcha, and I'm sure that wherever Two Rivers kids ends up is not the same community as Two Rivers. I firmly believe that students should have the right to go to school in their community. I mean, everything about education nowadays is about place, it's about place value. We want our kids to learn where they live. Place-based education is so vital today that sending kids to school in an area that isn't theirs, just, it doesn't sit right with me. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the board? Next up, we have Catherine Baird.
Catherine Baird.
State your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Catherine Baird, last name B-A-I-R-D. Thank you for this public comment time ahead of this evening's work session. I am a teacher at Hunter Elementary School, and this is my sixth year there. This evening, my comments will focus on transportation. If the board decides to close Hunter Elementary, the vast majority of Hunter students will become bus riders. There will be a significant impact on many Hunter students' ability to access their education and their parents' ability to interact with their children's teachers. Although on paper, 183 of our students have bus coverage, only 58 of them regularly ride the bus. Hunter is primarily a walking school. Most of our students get to school each day on their own two feet. Many of our families have only one vehicle or no vehicle at all. Some families walk with their children to school, while other students walk by themselves. We have a large number of students who are tardy, due to no fault of their own. Many of our Hunter parents are working multiple jobs to ensure that their families have what they need. Unfortunately, that means that they have to take shifts that make it impossible for them to be there when their kid needs to get to school or to the bus stop. If they're within walking distance, the child can get themselves to school even if they miss that bus time. That enables them to be there learning for the rest of the day. This isn't hypothetical, an example from my classroom this year. I have a student who often struggles to get to school. One day, they showed up at about 10:30. Our school starts at eight. I welcomed them, made sure they'd had a chance to eat some breakfast, and then asked how they'd gotten to school that day. They told me that they woke up at about 9:30 that morning. Everybody else in their household was asleep. They got themselves showered, ate breakfast, brushed their teeth, and walked to school. I teach eight and nine-year-olds. How many eight-year-olds do you know? There are kids like that child in every single classroom at Hunter. Once you make that child a bus rider, they will no longer be able to get to school. They don't have that option to get up, get ready, and walk. They'll have a three-to-five-minute window, and if they miss it, they lose out on their education for the entire day. If you take away their ability to walk, you're taking away their access to education. My fellow community members have spoken a lot about equity this evening. Access is a huge part of equity, and when you remove our Hunter students' access to be able to walk to school, you are removing their opportunity for education. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you. That'll bring us to our last testimony and up to our one-hour time limit. With that, we will have Chelsea Barney. Do we have Chelsea Barney here? Okay, then we will move to Tanika Fontana. She should be on Zoom. Thank you, Tanika. If you could state your name, spell your last, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Nika Fontana, F-O-N-T-A-N-A. I want to speak to you as two people. One, as a parent of children in our community. Second, as a member of our town, because this is all of our town, and all of your children, I care about all of them. And I am a parent with a child at Hunter Elementary. But like I said, it's not only for my son, this is also for my son's friends, his peers, his neighbors, his community, the people that he sees every day, the people that we see every day, because we're all part of Southside Fairbanks. The kids of Hunter Elementary and their families have so many benefits from Hunter, as Hunter being the hub. A majority of the students are, as stated, Title I recipients, low-income families, the families of minorities, with over 50% of the children coming from minority groups. At the time of its closure, Joy Elementary had the highest amount of native children enrolled. Then they closed, and now the district is proposing to close Hunter, the current elementary school with the highest-enrolled minority, entitled children. This targeting of Hunter, it feels like a systematic targeting of at-risk families, minorities, and disadvantaging them further than what we have already experienced as a community. And Hunter is a unique, deep, special community, and it begins in childhood, and childhood begins at elementary school. I have two sons. My son, who has not yet old enough to go to elementary school, still identifies himself as a Hunter Hornet, because that's what his brother is. He comes to us to family nights, and the staff at Hunter already recognizes him. And even though he's not old enough for kindergarten, he knows that he already belongs there through his brother. The closing of Hunter breaks up that experience, that closeness, that community to him, the future, and to so many children who are just like him. My son is the child you are currently working for. His future is the one we need to support, him and the children who are just like him. So this isn't about just my kids, but all of our kids, because our kids are our future, and our future begins in childhood. And our first school, Hunter Elementary, is a massive part of our childhood. So I ask you to please not break that up. And continuing from that, Hunter is the only elementary school currently that is right next to not only a middle school, but also a high school. It is a unique hub in the Fairbanks North Star Borough, where eight through 12 is all in the same area. Sibling groups walk to and from school together and meet before and after school. And that would be robbing them of that, robbing the future of that. And Hunter is the only school south of Airport Road. We need to keep that, so please, from the bottom of my heart, keep Hunter Elementary open. We need it.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you so much. Thank you, everybody who came tonight and testified. We truly appreciate each and every one of you for being here at this time. That has brought us to our one-hour time limit. The board will take a five-to-10-minute recess as we set up for our work session. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome back. We are now back from recess and we are going to move into our school consolidation conversation. Superintendent Dr. Luke Minor, Assistant Superintendent Kate LaPlante and Andy DeGraw, Chief Operations Officer will continue discussion on school consolidations. And with that, I hand it over to you guys.
All right. Thank you, President Burnett, and welcome board. We appreciate the public's input tonight and collaboration as we continue to work through the school consolidation process together. I know this is a very challenging time for all of our families, students and staff impacted by the consolidation plan and the big changes that we're going through here in Fairbanks. Tonight is the second of three work sessions to discuss our proposed plan for consolidation. For the public who have questions about the budget and what the plan is to close the entire budget deficit after the consolidation vote, my proposed budget will be released on February 17th and the board will work through the remaining deficit that remains with a timeline of having to send a recommended budget to the Borough Assembly by April 1st. The board, best case, will have at least $6 million worth of additional cuts to consider at that time. And so folks that have asked for where are other cuts coming from, the board will still have to make some sizable cuts after they've made decisions on school consolidations. I want to address some of the testimony tonight and some of the emails that we've been getting to ensure accurate information is provided to the community. This year's recommendations are based on the community-created framework. Schools were not chosen at random from the administration and we worked hard and the community-created facilities group worked hard on the framework that was created and used. Charter schools, best homeschool and our neighborhood schools are all public schools here in the district. We love and appreciate all of our Fairbanks students. We are not closing schools for the sole purpose of repurposing them for charter schools or best. Once the board makes a decision, the school district is required to offer school district facilities to charter schools and they have the right of first refusal. That's required by the state. Best is a public school recognized by the state of Alaska and does generate revenue for the district, which benefits students throughout the district. The cost of operating Nordeale is the cost of utilities and a part-time custodian and the revenue that Best brings in far exceeds the costs of running Nordeale as a facility. Closing the administrative center does not save money. The savings in school consolidations is through the reduction in duplicative staff. If we close the ADC, the same costs could be shifted to the school we would move to. So utility costs and the custodial costs that we experience here at the ADC would be similar at other schools. The increase in district administration costs in this year's budget is largely due to the increase in health insurance costs district-wide and that's coded to district administration. Turning our schools over to DODIA is not a cost savings for our district. We would lose funding based on school closures, loss of enrollment and the loss of impact aid. I want to say we're proud that we get to serve our military-connected students and losing them to DODIA schools would be a big blow to the district. Lastly, I couldn't help hearing how many things have been lost in the last 10 years in our district due to consistent underfunding for the district from the state. While school consolidations are incredibly painful, we do have an opportunity to right-size our district and then work to revitalize our district as additional funding comes our way. I'm hopeful that our legislators will take swift action on a permanent increase to education funding and that the governor will approve this increase so we can bring back more activities, elementary, instrumental music, ELP and reasonable class sizes. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Assistant Superintendent LaPlante and Chief Operating Officer Andrew DeGraw.
Thank you so much. We will be beginning our presentation and this is, like Dr. Minor said, the second installment of a three installment plan. Tonight, we will be specifically talking about transportation and building usage and class sizes. So again, school consolidation is a difficult conversation, but it is with our strong hope that it is part of a revitalization for our entire district as we can direct money more directly to students. So this week, we will be looking at building and process, building and classroom capacities, redistricting and transportation, the repurposing of buildings and staffing impacts.
There were a few items of information that board members requested at last week's meeting. We're going to start the presentation tonight with those figures and that data that was requested. So this first slide here, I had mentioned that within the state foundation formula, there's a step down, a hold harmless that is a step-down process where each time a school is removed from the foundation formula, there's a loss of revenue that's incorporated with that. And so the state has a hold harmless clause that's about a five-year process where for the first two years that a school is closed, it's 100% hold harmless if any lost revenue within the formula. And then starting in year three, there's a 33% decline. Year four, a 66.6% decline. And then in year five, it's 100% of the revenue loss. So these numbers here reflected in the slide represent total savings initially of all five schools on the recommended consolidation list, approximately $7 million. So as I mentioned, 100% of the revenue loss is held harmless in the first two years and then there's a gradual step down in year three, four and five. The $4.8 million represents an estimate of perpetual annual savings. The next slide. The board requested information on our charter leases, annual costs. These are annual lease expenses for each of our charters, not counting utility expenditures. So utility costs are in addition to that except for Effie Cochran charter. So Effie Cochran resides in the Howard Luke Building, which is district-operated, and that number is inclusive of their utility expenditures. The next slide, we wanted to acknowledge some ideas that we've been receiving from the community, some of those ideas we heard here in the last hour in public testimony. The idea of a magnet school making existing schools magnet schools is, we assume, similar to Barnett. That's historically, traditionally, a magnet school looks to our district like what Barnett currently looks like. For informational purposes, we spend just shy of half a million dollars additional on Barnett Elementary to run its magnet program. And so that's an idea that we can continue to vet out. We've heard that suggestion or that input from the community and we're acknowledging that. And just give the board some information regarding the additional costs and expenditures that the district incurs on our one magnet school. Also, redistricting has been brought up and a concern of where are students going to be redistricted in schools that are consolidated. We're going to go into a lot more detail on that topic tonight. I think it's the third portion of our slides. We go into redistricting and we'll get into... It's certainly a balancing act, right? The amount of information that administration has gone through and mined is quite astonishing, especially when it gets to 10, 11, 12,000 students and where they're going to go and ride times, et cetera, et cetera. But we'll provide the balance of as much information as is helpful, but don't want to overwhelm folks with too much information where we start to drown in the data. But we'll get into that topic here later on in the meeting. And then one last informational slide before we jump into the meat of our meeting is a look back on our district enrollment, going back to the 2007, '08 school year. And you can see kind of the historical decline there, sometimes gradual, sometimes a little more pronounced. You can see in 2020, the significant decline related to school closure and the pandemic, somewhat of a rebound there. But then now going back to a gradual, I wouldn't say this year that the decline has been gradual. We lost 600 students. So it's not gradual. It's a significant decline. But you can see kind of a steady pattern over time from about the 2012, '13 point, the beginning of a decline. We peaked in 2009, '10 at just shy of 14,500 students and now we're under 12,000. We're at 11,800. So just gives a historical perspective on the enrollment decline here in the district. And at this point, we will pause for any questions.
Do we have any questions from the board? Mrs. Dullian?
Thank you. I have several. So I'll just pause after one and then you can put me back in. We heard tonight about the magnet idea of Pearl Creek. And from the testimony, we heard that it would be a K5 magnet idea and that the testifier suggested that it would not cost additional funding to operate. Can the administration speak to that at all?
I believe, I mean, Mr. DeGraw spoke to it in that if it operates similarly to Barnett and other magnet schools, there are additional costs attached to magnet schools to make them different than what a neighborhood school would be. And so I'd be curious to know how it didn't cost additional money if they did want to create a magnet school and make it different than what a neighborhood school generally operates as.
Follow-up, Ms. Dullian? Any other questions from the board? Mrs. Dullian, if you have another question?
Thank you. Yes, I do. The fiscal year '24 charter annual lease cost slide. So if I'm looking at Effie Cochran, I just want to clarify and question here, is that $257,000? Who does that go to?
That currently goes to the district.
Okay. And then the other charter schools that equals about $1.5 million, who does that go to?
Those go to private entities that are the landlords of those facilities.
Okay, thank you. So that, again, I'd like to state is a $1.5 million cost that's going to private entities. That's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Mrs. Hardy?
On those same charter school leases, you said Effie Cochran, that included their utilities?
Yes.
Do you know what portion of that is actual rent paid to the district versus the utilities for operating the building?
I don't want to misspeak on the utility costs. I don't have them right here, right now. I can get that information to the board.
Do we know what we charge them in rent?
We charge them an annual amount of $257,000 and that includes utilities. So I can get in and find the actual utility costs for the building and then that would give us the rent number.
May I ask one follow-up?
Yes.
Do we pay rent to the borough for any of our school buildings?
No.
Any other questions from board members? Mrs. Dullian?
Yes, thank you. Is it possible to, in the neighborhood school enrollment changes, add in non-Fairbanks North Starborough School District students who live in our attendance area but are enrolled in correspondence schools that are not district schools? Is it possible to get that data?
Dr. Minor?
Not accurately. I mean, I think we could potentially provide a ballpark, but D doesn't disaggregate data for homeschool locations specifically. They do give an overall number for other outside homeschool programs. But many of the homeschool programs that we see here locally have offices around the state. And so it is tough to decipher how many private school students we have within the community as well as outside homeschool program students.
Follow-up, Ms. Dullian?
Yes, I have another question. And thank you for entertaining these tonight. If we don't close any schools, how many teachers would we have to let go and how much would class size increase across the board?
So as I mentioned in my previous statements to open tonight's discussion, the board will have an additional $6 million of deficit that they'll have to work through. I imagine some of that increase will be covered with a class size increase, which is a reduction in the number of teachers that we have. To give you an idea, I think we're looking at potentially two to two and a half student increase. That would be roughly $4.6 million. So that doesn't even get us all the way to the 6 million. If you decided not to close one of the schools that were on the recommended list, that would be another $1.7 million added to the $6 million. And so you can see how that quickly, your deficit quickly grows and there's a lack of levers for the district to pull to really save large amounts of money. As you'll see, as we get into detailed budget conversations, we detailed some of this in the custodial conversation as well as that there aren't many cuts left to make with the district, having made cuts over the last seven to eight years. There aren't many places that you can go that don't impact student class sizes and PTR. And we know through the Budget Committee and through strategic planning and the conversations that we regularly have with parents that that's the last thing that they want to see cut. They want class sizes to remain as stable as possible. But unfortunately, with the lack of adequate funding we have for the school district, that's oftentimes where we have to go to save additional dollars.
Mrs. Hardy? Ms. Maple and then Ms. Hardy.
Piggybacking off what Ms. Hardy asked about whether or not we pay rent for any school buildings to the borough, just for the sake of clarity, do we pay rent on this building to the borough?
No.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy?
It's more of a statement than a question, if that's allowed, just so that everyone has accurate information. Alaska Statute 14.03.255, which is the charter school statute. The last provision D reads, "A district shall offer a CHUa charter school the right of first refusal for a leased space in an existing school district facility or in a facility within the school district that is not currently being used as a public school. If the chief school administrator determines this facility meets requirements for health and safety applicable to public buildings or other public schools in the district. If the district requires lease payments by the charter school, the school district shall negotiate a lease agreement with the charter for an amount that does not exceed the true operational costs calculated on square footage based for the space leased under this section. It is extremely clear that we cannot make money off of charter school leases."
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Questions from the board? Mrs. Dullian, did you have another? No? Any other questions at this time? Seeing none, Mrs. LaPlante and Mr. DeGraw, please continue.
Thank you. We will begin a section on school building capacities. And within this section, we're going to try to clarify some understanding around what creates PTR or pupil-to-teacher ratio and class sizes and what is the capacity of a building. So the first part is pupil-to-teacher ratio, we call that PTR, is also known as the target class size. And that is specific to how many students we match to a teacher. So that has to do with how many teachers we need to hire for so many students. And that is, like Dr. Minor said, directly impacted by the budget. So when we are trying to save money and we cut and we raise PTR, that effectively means we need fewer teachers and we have larger class sizes, more students in that classroom, which is different than how many classrooms we have in a school. So this slide shows that in our district, the average schools, we have a variety of different blueprints, but the average is about 22 regular classrooms in that building. And at 67% capacity, we are currently using about 15 classrooms, leaving seven classrooms unused at most of our school buildings. That's a little bit different here or there, but that's usually what we have. It is hard to see those empty spaces when you go into a building, but walkthroughs do show that there's space available. This is a map of Anne Ween, which is one of our prototypical elementary schools. We have a variety of schools that use a similar blueprint. They can be slightly larger or slightly smaller, but on average, a blueprint like this has between 18 to 28 classrooms. And there is also additional space. So the classrooms in this are kind of around the perimeter. And then inside the building, we also have additional smaller spaces, some that would be utilized and designated for resource, some that are smaller for like a school psychologist or a speech language therapist working with just a few students, but also some that are completely appropriate for using for special education resource classrooms. We feel confident that we have enough classrooms available in all of our schools to increase the number of students at those schools, provide the classroom spaces they need and still maintain program space. So for example, at most of these schools, we have, like I said, between 18 and 28, so kind of an average of 22 classrooms and an additional 10 rooms are spaces that are appropriate for special education and support services.
Yeah, just to add on to Ms. LaPlante's comments here, in this section, we also want to get at, we've heard a narrative of that school consolidation will increase class sizes. And that is a false assertion. The PTR that Ms. LaPlante described is what sets, it's our target class size, so to speak. So in the elementary world, it's 25 students for each instructional teacher. When a school is closed, the one group of staff members that follow the students are those classroom instructional teachers. And they absolutely follow the students to either the one school that all the students go to or the various schools. And the same PTR that the board establishes for all of our schools district-wise is applied to that building that remains with new students coming in. And maybe folks are thinking that, you know, Ms. LaPlante just described the number of empty classrooms that we have in our buildings. Maybe folks are thinking, well, in one particular school, all classrooms are already taken up. So if you throw 70 more kids, we just have to throw them into classes that are already full and they just get bigger and bigger and bigger. We see that's not the case. There's actually classrooms sitting vacant that the incoming teachers that are following students will come into that building, inhabit the vacant classrooms and the same exact PTR will be applied to the school that's receiving redistricted students. So we just want to make it clear that consolidating our schools within our district does not increase class sizes in and of itself.
And to add to that, if you were to visit a school, it's sometimes hard to see the available spaces because we grow to use the spaces that we have. So if there's a room that is not being used for a classroom, I guarantee it's going to be used for some other purpose that is appropriate, but not necessarily what it was designed for. So it might be being used by multiple tutors or it could be a quiet area for the counselor to use with students, but it could also very well be the classroom that it was intended to be. Another slide that shows that we have the capacity actually draws on previous data from October 2007. As you saw in that previous slide, that was an area, a time that we had significant growth in our district and had a high number of students. And at that time, we had schools that were anywhere from 56% capacity to over 100% capacity and schools as high as 591 students or 500 students. And at that time, we had classrooms for them. They fit into the schools we had. Obviously, that has declined since then, but we have experienced that those did have capacity within those schools. At our current capacity, there in the December 10th, that's our school count. But once we do the consolidation, the recommended, what we anticipate the enrollment to be would be there and we would still have schools that are under what they had been in October 2007. So we would not be creating schools that are significantly larger than schools' sizes that we've had in the past and worked with. And again, to PTR, at that time, the PTR was 25 for kindergarten. Kindergarten at that time was AM and PM. So it was a little bit larger because there was a morning group of students and an afternoon group of students. But then in first through third grade, PTR was 23.5 and then it went to 25.5 and didn't increase up until we got to ninth and 12th grade. Our current PTR, we have 25 set as PTR for kindergarten through fifth grade. Then we have a significant jump at the middle school and another at the high school. So if we were looking to increase PTR, we would probably have to look at elementary school because we have already put a lot... because we have already put a lot of that shoulder that, on our upper, upper-level students. But this also means that at the PTR that we are now, again, we would be able to utilize the classrooms appropriately. Continuing that conversation, the pupil-to-teacher ratio, if you have 500 students, so I'm going to take a look at, we'll use Tikusik as our example here, 505 students would require about 20 teachers. 20 teachers in a school that has 23 classrooms leaves additional classrooms available, and that doesn't even include all the additional spaces that we talked about. So, we are confident that there will be the space available for the students and for additional programs. And that is that section, so we'll pause for questions, and we can go back to any slide that you want us to.
Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. I'd like, not necessarily, it's necessarily tonight, but when we're looking at PTR, and I'll preface my question with this statement, the thing that, when we look at schools of choice, schools of choice cap their classrooms. And neighborhood schools, we cannot. We legally must take any student who moves into that, that area, and, and they join that classroom, they join that school. When we're looking at capacity in particular, and I think this is more of an exercise for the community, because school of choice is public school, and that's important for us in this state to understand, when we're looking at building capacity, is it possible to include our charter schools in particular, in-person schools of choice, to look at their percentage capacity? My assumption, without seeing the numbers, is that their capacities are probably much lower, because their class sizes are capped at what we know as manageable and reasonable, that lead to better outcomes and better student, student-centered learning. Am I correct in understanding that our charter schools right now are capped, most of those classrooms for elementary are capped at 22?
That's correct.
Okay. And so right now, when we're looking at neighborhood schools, we're aiming with consolidation of our neighborhood schools. Am I correct in understanding from this slide deck that we're looking at potentially lowering it from 25, which currently is our pupil-to-teacher ratio at, in our neighborhood schools? Are we looking, are we trying to lower that with this proposal?
With, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
With our overall consolidation plan, are we trying to lower PTR?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, I think our goal with the overall consolidation plan is to stabilize PTR. Now, I don't, as I mentioned in my opening statements, there's other factors at play due to inadequate funding and the large deficits that the board will face, but this really is a way to reinvest into our schools that are operating more efficiently. And so, yes, it would be our hope to stabilize PTR or, and/or lower PTR, but knowing that a proposed budget's coming, that may look different than that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I understand that. If I can ask, just state a clarifying, or clarification of the intent of my question.
Clarification.
My intention is that when we look at our mission statement, which is to provide an equitable education, when we look at the discrepancies in class sizes between our schools of choice, our charter schools, and our neighborhood schools, that to me is not equitable. And so, the more that we can move more of our kid, of our students to classrooms that are manageable and offer more of our educators manageable class sizes, that to me gets us closer to equity. So, thank you. That's the reason for my question.
Mrs. Hardy?
Again, more statements than questions. I absolutely believe that every single student in this district deserves to be in a classroom with a reasonable PTR. That is 100% accurate. I am a public school teacher, and I am someone who has exclusively taught in our neighborhood schools, and I've taught in classrooms with well above 30 students in a fifth grade, and I've taught in small IR classrooms. I, I know the impact personally, so that is not the, the point of this. But in the effort of accurate information, my children attend a charter school, and charter schools do not cap their classrooms. Charter schools set a PTR exactly the same way that the district sets a PTR, and it comes at a significant cost. And in order to afford that PTR, they have to make choices. Charter schools don't have set-up counselors. Many charter schools don't have librarians. Many charter schools don't have nurses. I don't think any do, but I could be wrong, because every charter school is a unique community that makes choices, and instead of the school board making those choices, their academic policy committee makes those choices. On top of that, within their same budget that they're given, the same way that our district is, that goes through the foundation formula, they plug in the number of kids, they go through the same multipliers, there's told, here is your money, figure it out. You get to decide how you're going to balance this budget. And that also includes paying for maintenance costs. So at my son, my children's school, we had a boiler issue, and that had to come out of our activities fund and increasing the PTR of our classrooms, very similar to the exact same PTRs in our neighborhood schools. Boreal Sun does not have a cap at 22. We actively tried to get more students in order to offset our budget deficit, the same way the district had to. The charter schools are facing the same problems that this district is with flat funding. They're not our enemies, they're just a different version of school. I have a lot of things I could say about the policies and the legislation written and how it got us in this situation when it comes to homeschools and charters, and those are valid points. But the teachers that teach at charter schools belong to FEA. The support staff that work at charter schools belong to ESSA. The students that go there are public school students, and their parents have made a choice to choose something different, and it came at a cost. It came at a cost of not having transportation, which I agree, creates an equity problem in choice. All of those points are valid, but they're not in a magical scenario where they get to set a low PTR and not have to pay for it somewhere else.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Any, Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. Just a question for clarity. Last year, when we, and I'm not sure who I'm addressing this to, who was going to know the number. So, last year, when we chose to increase class sizes, do we know where the kindergarten classes were before we increased them? So, for the 23 to 24 school year, do we know what the kindergarten sizes were? Because I thought they were 18.
We actually held elementary class sizes status quo last year. Yeah, the increase came in the secondary grades.
So it was, we've had 25 students per elementary school and kindergarten this entire time?
For, at least a couple of three years now, yeah. Those have been static.
Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Lapont and Mr. DeGraw, please continue.
All right, thank you. So, the next section will cover redistricting, and we'll get into where the flow of students from the current neighborhood school to their new neighborhood schools would be, and then we'll go even further into the, the routes and the specifics of how those route times would look. There's a lot of information and, you know, lots of students to cover, so I'll just remind people of the, the map that we designed that sort of just gives us a, a representation of our district. And we're going to talk about the impacted students. When we talk about the impacted students, we're not talking about students that might be attending that area school as an out-of-attendance area student, who might be attending there because their parent works there. That's the right of our employees to have their student come to their, the school that they work at, if it's appropriate, and, or students that are there because they are attending a special education programs. Those students might find a change, but it's not an impact that we're creating in this scenario. It's something that they, and they still have the rights, the families still have the rights to access OAA, or to take their child with them to an appropriate school. So, we will, for the purpose of the rest of this, we're just talking about the kids that would be attending that school as their attendance area per the neighborhood where they live. So, the number of students impacted by our proposed changes is 1,190 students, most of those being elementary students. Of course, the largest impacted coming at the specific schools that are going to be, that are proposed for closure, so Hunter, Midnight Sun, Pearl Creek, Salcha, and Two Rivers. But there is some impact at the middle and the high school level. I just want to make a note that at the high school level, if students have been attending a high school and they're in their junior or senior year, and they want to continue, while we wouldn't be able to provide transportation, we would certainly support them wanting to finish out at the high school that they've been attending. So if they can find transportation and their parents want them to stay there, we fully support that option. There's a lot of slides that we're going to go into that have maps, and it's difficult to follow on the slide deck here. So if you want to, or for anybody in the public, if you want to scan this, or there's a Bitly, it's HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash BIT dot L Y forward slash four F V B one M T, and you can join following along on these maps.
Yeah, the, that app is very handy, because as folks will see, we'll show various maps here in the next few slides, and a lot of times it's difficult. The, the app will be helpful to zoom in and see things in a lot more detail. So, wondering, hey, does something affect my area, my neighborhood, that, that app will be helpful. So, this is a current map district-wide of our different attendance areas around the district, including North Pole, as well as obviously Fairbanks. The next slide is our projected recommended map. It's important to note, it's draft, we, we have the watermark there. This will be kind of a work-in process. I want to stress, there's a tremendous, when I mentioned earlier, a lot of data and a lot of numbers. There's, there's a lot of information here, and what, what we found out is, it's not necessarily easy just to pull simple levers and come up with nice, pretty symmetrical attendance areas. There's a lot of factors that come into play. We've received some input and feedback from the community. We're constantly throwing ideas around. We'll, I'm sure, we'll receive feedback and suggestions and questions from board members. There's a lot of ripple effects. If one suggested change might look simple and straightforward on the surface, and then all of a sudden, there's two or three dominos that fall after that change, and things, unintended consequences, things that weren't thought of. So it's just a, generally a complicated arena that we're in when we're talking redistricting. So, having said that, we will jump into the elementary school arena.
So we'll begin with the elementary schools that are impacted, and we'll start with the North Pole area. So we're going to specifically be looking at where the students from Two Rivers, Salcha, and Midnight Sun will be flowing to. So this is the current map, this is how students are currently districted, and this is our draft, our proposed draft. It's hard to see all this, but basically, there's a change that would have Midnight Sun students going between Tikusik Brown Elementary School and North Pole Elementary School. And there's a couple of things that make this the logical way to do things. One is that it disperses them evenly to their nearest neighborhood schools, and as you'll see later, it actually somewhat reduces some of the bus times, and we have the capacity at those schools to do that. Had we chosen a different school in that same region, there would have been more students impacted by transportation changes, because we would have had to have moved everybody towards North Pole. And so, schools at non-closing schools would, more, more of them would be, have been impacted in addition to the schools at the closing school. So, Salcha, fairly straightforward. Salcha students will flow to Anderson Crawford Elementary School. Previously, before this, we had students going to Ben Ielson Junior Senior High from Salcha, so they have experience with that, the route times, they have experience with parents getting onto base. So those concerns, while they are understandable, that those questions would be brought up, we have years of experience with that working for families in the Salcha area. And Two Rivers Elementary School, Two Rivers, as elementary students would flow to Weller Elementary, and since Weller flows to Tanana and Lathrop, they would continue on to Tanana and Lathrop, and they would become funneled towards in-town. And that also helps, because as we have, as we are closing schools, the North Pole area has also seen some growth, and so this helps alleviate some of the growth that we're seeing there. But, to be specific, Two Rivers feeder system would probably see the most change. Instead of them flowing from Two Rivers to North Pole Middle to North Pole High, they would now flow to Weller, Tanana Middle, and Lathrop High School. And again, if there are high school students that want to finish out their high school career, we are very supportive of that, but we will not be sending transportation from Two Rivers to North Pole. The transportation will be flowing from Two Rivers into town.
Just one thing to add on the previous slide, Ms. Lapont, we're constantly updating our figures and numbers. In the Two Rivers to Tanana Middle School line, we might see printed presentations that have the number 11. We updated that to 24. We corrected that number. So, if you have a hard copy that says 11, it's 24. We updated two or three data points. I'll try to remember them as we go.
So, we can pause at that region and let there be questions, because it's a little bit easier to track it sort of by region than trying to save your questions to the very end. So if there's any questions specific to this redistricting that we just went over, we'll take those now.
Questions from the board? Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. There's been a lot of concerns, looking at Two Rivers in particular with the bus times, and I'm sorry, I know that we've been provided it, but for the public, can somebody state the average bus time, or is that in a future part of this presentation?
We're going to get into the actual transportation. So there's the redistricting, which is where the students would flow, and then there's transportation, which is how they get there.
Okay.
Over at length, yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Just, have we asked any of the Two Rivers community which feeder system they were looking at, or do we have any feedback from that community?
We don't at this time, but that's something that we're open to, and are open to feedback on this redistricting plan. I think that's an area where we are seeking input, and it is helpful in knowing where families want to go. Now, with that said, as Mr. DeGraw said, there are sometimes ripple effects, and so it's not always a case where we can meet people where they want to be in terms of the school that they would like to be redistricted to, but it is helpful to have an understanding of where the majority of families would like to go.
Mr. DeGraw?
And then, yeah, in addition to that, the rationale of administration was the Two Rivers elementary students would be redistricted to Weller, which feeds into Tanana, and then Lathrop. Certainly, Ms. Lapont mentioned this earlier, we would allow 100% of all students currently attending the North Pole secondary schools to continue that. The downside is, we will no longer be able to provide transportation to those schools, so.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one, just regarding this slide, actually kind of similar to Mrs. Hardy's, when you're talking about the feeder system and you're taking the students from Two Rivers. That distance between Weller, Tanana, and Lathrop, and then Weller and North Pole, is that about the same? Is there much of a difference there?
Yeah, the dist, it's equidistant between the two secondary school locations, yes, between North Pole and Lathrop and Tanana.
Thank you. Mr. Burgess?
This, this may be something that you'd prefer to answer later, and that's fine, but as far as the, you know, when you were talking about busing students from Two Rivers, is it, are, are secondary students and elementary school students on the same buses here, or?
And I was going to introduce Mr. Hinton later, but I'll do it now. Mr. Hinton, our transportation director has provided us invaluable assistance throughout this whole process. I will look to him to answer that question.
Yes, sir. For Two Rivers, they're not. Two Rivers has their own bus, and then there's a North Pole Middle, North Pole High bus out there currently, so two separate routes.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Mr. Hinton, one for middle school and one for high school?
No, the, the middle school, high school bus is shared out in Two Rivers, between North Pole Middle and North Pole High.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. And this question, I think, can be applied to all of, all of these areas. As we look at the feeders, so into Tan, into the secondary in particular, the board has been provided, I guess it only applies to Two Rivers. The board has been provided what the capacity will be, should we make this change at, for Weller. But it would be interesting to see if, unless I'm missing it here, the capacity for Tanana Middle and Lathrop, what that does. for Tanana Middle and Lathrop, what that does to those capacities. And the reason I'm asking is because I want to just look at the overall impact of students, not only those that we're, you know, putting in other elementary schools, but then also in the middle and high school.
Mr. DeGraw?
So, yeah, if that information doesn't exist, we can get that for you. It'd be pretty easy, too. I will say the impact is quite low. We're looking at 20 to 25 secondary students at Two Rivers currently, and so, you know, Lathrop High School is at a 50% capacity, you know, at 700-plus students, and then Tanana Middle School has a significant vacant capacity as well. So really, the key there is a low number of Two River students that are in the secondary arena in that community, but we can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none at this time, back over to you guys, Mrs. LaPonte, Mr. DeGraw.
Thank you.
All right, so now to the Fairbanks area. So the two schools recommended for consolidation in Fairbanks are Hunter and Pearl Creek, and we'll look at the current map and boundaries for each school. Pearl Creek, the yellow, and Hunter, the orange, I believe, I don't have my glasses, but I believe the orange. The draft recommended boundaries there, and again, you can refer to the app to get a little more in detail on that. And the student migration there from Hunter Elementary, we have students redistricted to Denali Elementary and Lad Elementary, as well as to University Park. And then for Pearl Creek Elementary, the largest number of students would be redistricted to Ann Ween Elementary, a significant amount to University Park, and then a lesser amount to Wood River, and then a very small number of students districted to Weller Elementary School. It's interesting to note that the area of, I believe in the Summit area, Summit Road?
Echo Acres, sir.
Echo Acres area. It's interesting to note that on a secondary basis, those areas are currently districted to Tanana and Lathrop High School, and so that's kind of a little bit of a cleanup, small number of students, but lines those neighborhoods up on an elementary, middle, and high school basis, redistricting-wise. And then the next slide is student migration from other schools that are not being consolidated. We talked about this in the last meeting. Not all of the impact is solely isolated to schools that would close, but additionally, at schools that remain open, there would be some student impact. So at Ann Ween, we would have 99 students districted to Lad Elementary School, and then at Denali Elementary School, a small number to Ann Ween. The 34 students to Barnett Magnet, we would be expanding Barnett's walk zone and provide the opportunity for those students to be able to walk to Barnett Magnet School, and then a small number of students to Lad Elementary School. From Lad Elementary, 97 students on post would be redistricted to Arctic Light Elementary, and then from University Park Elementary, 48 students would be redistricted to Wood River Elementary.
And it's important, I think, to know that some of these students had maybe, you know, been in those areas before some of the changes that happened a few years ago. For example, students that were at Hunter had at one time been going to Joy and had been going to Ann Ween, so even further away than what we're proposing they would be, and with longer bus routes.
And we'll pause for questions.
Mrs. Hardy? Oh, Mrs. Maple?
Just to make sure I understood correctly, were you saying that the 97 students that would move from Lad to Arctic Light already live on post?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Hardy?
With the Hunter student migration, so we have 104 going to Denali, which is relatively within the same area, and the other two would be a lot farther, definitely not within walking distance. How many of those students who are being redistricted out of that geographic area were walkers that were in that walk area for Hunter prior?
So the 104 for Denali, those are in what we would consider Hunter's walk zone. The 49 that are going to University Park are in that area that, I'm not sure the actual, like, official name of the neighborhood, but it's all the dead presidents' names. So Washington, Kennedy, that neighborhood. So that would be, they're not within walking distance right now. They'd be going to U Park. It's actually about equidistant ride time. We'll discuss that here shortly. So the Lad area would be, it's technically within Hunter's walk zone on the South Cushman, in the South Cushman area. We are currently busing there, but we see lower ridership because of, it is within walking distance. And then the rest of the 81 would be in the area south of 23rd, in the Hunter attendance area that was formerly Joy and Ann Ween.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Burgess?
Just to thought that the number of students moving from Pearl Creek to Weller is relatively small, and I understand, you know, all the ripple effects, maybe this is going to come up later, but why are those students being, why are they going to Weller instead of staying with some of their former classmates?
So they would be, like Mr. DeGraw talked about, they were already in a zone that would have gone to Tanana and then on to Lathrop, and so it cleans up that feeder system. And I think a couple of years ago, that section was actually part of Weller, and then it got shifted, so it's moving them back to Weller. And some of those students have been attending Pearl Creek, so some of the other students that we identified actually were attending Pearl Creek out of attendance area. So of the students that are impacted by this, really only four fall into the attendance area zone. There's chance that they could apply to go with their peers through the out-of-attendance-area process, and then, so those four students might not be impacted, and then as new families, you know, as school-aged kids came up, they would just flow to Weller, and they wouldn't know any difference. So I feel like that's an area where if this is the best scenario for everybody involved, we can work maybe with four families to see what we can do.
Thank you.
Ms. Loa Carroll Hubbard?
Thank you. This is to the transportation. Can you restate the 81 students that are going, that would be going to Lad? And can you just restate what you said? I didn't quite catch it. You said something about being on South Cushman, and I just missed it. I just need you to say it one more time, please.
Sure thing, ma'am. So the, on South Cushman, the road, everything to the east side of the road, that kind of, we broke these into like zones and subzones, but everything there is technically within Hunter's walk zone. We're currently busing there, but we are putting that into, so that would be going into Lad, and then the remainder of the students that's south of 23rd Avenue, so 23rd to the Mitchell, those, so everything in that South Cushman area I just described, and then south of 23rd was Joy's attendance area, and then, I believe it was Barnett was the divining glide between, south of 23rd, between Ann Ween and Joy. So those 81 students are coming out of what was formerly Joy and Ann Ween, and, yeah, that's where they're coming from.
Follow-up, please. Okay, so south of 23rd, and like Pegger Lake and all the way to Van Horn, or is that kind of where you're talking? Those kids were going to Ann Ween?
No, ma'am. I can get you a better diagram. Instead of trying to describe it, I can email you and give clarification on that for what the boundaries used to be and what they would look like now. And like the more precise numbers of students impacted by zones, even by like street-to-street, if you'd like, instead of trying to describe it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Mr., or, sorry, Mrs. Hardy?
Is there a way that the administration could look at for those students that are currently in Hunter's walk zone, if they could feed into Denali? Having worked at that school, it is, as we heard testimony, really a lot to ask some of these families to go across town to Lad. Sometimes they don't have reliable transportation, they're using public transit. If we can keep them at least a place that's walkable, that might alleviate, and they're not the families that are going to show up and be able to testify here. So if it's possible, I get Denali, it looks like it's at 90% in the current plan.
We'll continue to look at that and see if that's a possibility.
Mr. Burgess?
I just want to second that notion from Ms. Hardy. I am extremely concerned that students from Hunter are going to get left behind by their buses and, you know, by the system because of that. And I really appreciate the testimony we heard tonight about that, and, you know, it was one of the first things, when I saw Hunter was on the list, that came to my mind as well, having visited there last year and understanding the challenges that many of these families and students face. I think it's really important consideration here to make sure that we're not going to be further disadvantaging these students. And the other, if I can make a quick comment, this is a little, Ms. Maratti's voice is ringing in my head about color deficiencies, and so I'm just, I just would appreciate it if we could check these maps for accessibility and make sure that there's versions available to the public that don't necessarily rely so much on color.
Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you so much. I just want to ask a little bit here, because we're talking about an area that has a school of choice in there, and that's Barnett, a Magnet school. Is there any possibility to expand Barnett's Magnet to capture any more of those students that would be potentially reallocated from Hunter?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. I know we tried to expand it to include more students, but Barnett is currently at capacity, and so, you know, due to their lottery system and the staffing that they have right now, there are constraints there, but we can take a second look to see if there would be additional students that we could expand into Barnett based on that walk zone.
I have a follow-up. What is Barnett's class size right now?
They're at District PTR.
District PTR, okay. That's good.
Another follow-up, Ms. Dulean?
Yeah, I do have a follow-up comment. I'm just very concerned about the walkers at Hunter, and so into the ability that we are able to offer walkable districts for those students, I just encourage us to do so. Even, I understand, though, that's, that might be an impossible ask. Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy?
Hate to say it, so looking at the current plan, it doesn't look like we're displacing any Hunter's, or not Hunter, Barnett students currently. They aren't a charter school. We do have the purview, but I'm not sure. Maybe it's a Magnet thing, because it's a lottery where we can't, but should we be looking at redistricting and saying that some students, I don't know. I don't know that it's possible. I don't know as much about Magnets.
So Barnett does have an area that has been their walk zone area. Like other charter schools and Magnet schools, they take a certain number, the students that are deemed within their walk zone. We have expanded that area to leave, to take off some of the enrollment burden from Denali and to increase the walk zone attendance area possibilities for Barnett. We could look at expanding it further, and they would have to either decide to increase the number of students that they have at Barnett, or they would have to, over time, displace, you know, offset that by not having as many students attend via lottery. And we also run the risk of creating a size that makes them have to choose between a K5 model and a K8 model. So there's some things that they would, you know, all of these things could be discussed, but, you know, there's secondary layers to that.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes, it's more out of, if we look at like University Park, 48 students are going to be moving to Wood River, but we're not proposing anything similar to Barnett, where...
Those, the majority of the students that attend Barnett, there's not a walks, there's not an area to displace them to. We simply just would reduce the number of lottery seats, and they go back to, you know, so it's closing, it's closing a lottery seats.
But if they're currently, say, a fifth grader there, they wouldn't get in through the lottery, so they would finish out. So then we have, I guess that's what I'm not understanding.
Maybe I'm not understanding your question. We don't have very many students, I mean, there's a small number of students that go to Barnett as their neighborhood, and actually, we're talking about increasing that. So we're not displacing anybody unless we displace them by reducing the lottery seats.
Mr. DeGraw?
Take a stab at it. So Barnett's currently at capacity. We are expanding their walk zone by approximately 34 students, so they're going to have to do some fandangling, reducing the lottery. I don't know, would they reduce kindergarten size possibly, incoming kindergarteners? If, the more we expand that 34, the more challenging it is for Barnett to absorb those new students without basically unenrolling existing students, that's the challenge, so.
That's what I meant, was we're essentially, if they weren't a Magnet, unenrolling students from like University Park and moving them to a new school, but because they're a Magnet, that's why we're saying we're protecting that lottery status.
I would say that's a fair statement.
Yeah, I think that's definitely a fair statement. You know, if the board directed us to investigate that, we'd have to come up with some equitable way to unenroll students from a lottery process, which is different than a neighborhood school.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none at this time? Go ahead, Mrs. LaPonte and Mr. DeGraw.
Now, we're going to go into the middle schools, and I'm going to head it over to Andy.
So current map, again, refer to the app for more detail, and then our recommended draft new boundaries. A lot more minor, the changes that we've made. The next slide articulates the changes. So not, like I said, not a big impact. Denali Elementary currently has its feeder system split between Randy Smith and Ryan, as well as West Valley and Lathrop, and we are creating a sole one path through Ryan Middle School and Lathrop High School, eliminating the Randy Smith and West Valley feeder. And then for Lad Elementary, we're actually expanding from Tanana and Lathrop to both Ryan and Tanana, and then to Lathrop. And then for Wood River Elementary, we're expanding from Ryan, adding in Randy Smith, both going to West Valley High School.
Right. Okay, Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. This is a request that the, thank you for the Google. This is really helpful. I'd like to ask the administration to put the draft feeder system changes for middle schools, you know, in a similar format. I think it's easy for people to figure out where you live and then, and then look at that, unless I'm missing, that it's already on here.
It is on there. It's a checkbox. I don't have it pulled up on my mobile device, but you can uncheck elementary schools and then check middle schools and see the differences there.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hardy, did I see your hand?
It's just a question, why Denali were moving, taking away Randy and West, but then were adding Ryan and Randy to the other schools, if there was just a rationale, or I was, for the feeder systems for Lad and Wood River.
Generally, there might be something more to add to this, but it was generally to balance out capacities at the schools. We had significant capacity vacant at Ryan Middle School, one of our newer buildings, and so just to try to get a little bit of balance in there.
Ms. Maple?
On the same note as Ms. Hardy, I was, you know, as I was looking at it, it sort of stood to reason that those changes allowed a lot of the kids that are being moved at elementary school level to still have the same middle to high school route that they would have if we hadn't moved the schools. It seems like that those changes maintain a lot of those. Is that accurate? a lot of those. Is that accurate? Like those, those kids from Hunter that are now going to go to Lad still get to go to Ryan?
Yes, that's true.
And same with the kids from Pearl Creek that are going to Wood River, this would allow for them to still to go to Randy?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to throw myself in real quick. I guess it's more to some clarification points. I'm just curious on the change in feeder system with Denali and Randy and West to Ryan and Lathrop. Will that, my biggest concern is will that impact West Valley a lot with that? Because I know that that just, that area is a huge, well, was a huge feeder system for West.
So I think the numbers are small here, but I'm going to, it's all right, we'll go to Mr. Hinton to provide a little additional information and context.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's multiple factors that kind of play into, like, yeah, how these boundaries were rearranged and like how they were balanced. Like Mr. DeGraw said, a lot of it had to do with just school capacities. But also someone had to do with cleaning up some of those smaller splits we see as students leave the elementary school and go off to middle schools. For example, the one I'm looking at right now, with Denali going to just Ryan and Lathrop, right now they're going to Ryan and Randy Smith. But the portion of Denali that's going to Randy Smith right now is a very small sliver of Denali's population. And I believe we only have one fifth grader in that area who's going to be splitting off from their cohort and go into a different school. So that kind of cleans that up. Same with, you know, we were talking about Pearl Creek earlier, going to, right now Pearl Creek splits off and goes primarily to Randy Smith. We have 60-something students going off to Randy Smith, and we have two students who will be going off to Tannanaw in that former Joy attendance area. So aligning some of these boundaries, cleaning up some of those feeder systems. So the, it's, we're not just looking at the size of like the number of students there, but more like, like more granular, like the number of fifth graders who are there. So who's going to be splitting off from their cohorts? So cleaning up a lot of that. And so a lot of this is, yeah, looking at the, the size of the school they're going into and the capacity and trying to balance out the capacity at the secondary levels, but also trying to keep groups pretty even as they split.
No, yeah.
And I would say that's the bigger issue, really, is when you have two, two students peeling off from their 80 peers. We wanted to try to clean that up.
No, makes total sense. It's equalizing them out. So, no, makes sense. Thank you so much. Mrs. Hardy, or Mrs., Ms. Maple, and then Mrs. Hardy.
I just, it's a comment, but just speaking to that, what, what Mr. Hinton was just explaining, cleaning up, I just wanted to, it seems like such a small thing, but this being, I'm looking for silver linings everywhere I can. And, you know, my, one of my daughter's really good friends was, had just been displaced to Pearl Creek from Joy, and then was one of those kids that was in that district and was like one of two kids to go to Tannanaw, when all of his brand-new friends all went to Randy. And, you know, I got to watch that one up close and personal. I'm sure many people in this room and at this table have seen those little moments where that happens. And so, an opportunity to fix those little things, I mean, they're not little things, those were huge impacts on that one or two kid, or kids that get impacted in that way. So crappy situation, these little things where we're trying to fix something that wasn't functioning is where I'm focusing my energy.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Mrs. Hardy.
Basically the same comment, but I myself was one of those kids who went Tannanaw, West Valley. And it's, it does matter. I know for my own self, I wanted to go to Lathrop because that's where all my brand-new junior high friends went, and it didn't matter. I was one of like six kids that went to West Valley. It worked out great, but if we can not have that happen to families, it's nice.
Ms. Dullian.
I'll ask the question, that follow-ups from those comments. What percentage of students who were just recently impacted from the previous school closures are now also being impacted by school closures, potential school closures, I should say?
I'm not sure if we have that tonight, but that's something that we can take a look at.
Yeah, that, that would be incredibly helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Back to you, Mrs. LaPlante, Mr. DeGraw. All right, we will look at the high schools. These are relatively simple. We have three, in our current situation, we have three large areas. We have blue to North Pole High, of course, purple for West, or for Lathrop, and peach for West Valley. And in our new areas, we would take that, the major shift is that that whole section that previously was Two Rivers that flowed into North Pole would now be Two Rivers flowing into Tannanaw and therefore Lathrop. So that's the major change there. So here's the migration route. So North Pole High, we would have about 11 students going to Lathrop. North Pole Middle, we'd have about two students going to Tannanaw Middle. Randy Smith, we'd have 25 students going to Ryan. And Two Rivers Elementary, we would have 24 students that are, that would be going to Tannanaw Middle School because currently Two Rivers has sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So that's a little bit larger. Again, you know, if there are families that want to stay at their secondary schools, specifically the high school, we would, you know, wholeheartedly support that, but we won't have transportation. The families would have to figure that out. Any questions from the board? Mr. DeGraw.
So...
What'd you do?
Testing. He has my glasses. Mr. Hinton informs me that 84 students approximately would be double impacted from the priors, about three years ago, was the prior consolidation the district went through. The 84 impacted would have been pre-K, K-1, early grades.
Can everybody double check too that their mic is off better?
So 84 is the number that Mr. Hinton just provided me. And the number being small, given the fact that that was, I believe, three years ago. And so a vast majority of the students impacted there have graduated on through and into secondary grades.
Questions from board members? Seeing none.
Hey, so this next, or you gave me one that doesn't work.
It's that time of night.
Test, test.
All right, we're, we're gonna, this shell game of microphones, we're going to get this figured out. We are going to be going into transportation. So the last section was talking about where students are going to be going. This section is going to talk about how they get there. So this is the, the transportation, the routes and the ride times. So you won't be hearing from me very much. You're going to hear a lot from, and, from Dr. DeGraw and Mr. Hinton, so.
Dr. DeGraw.
I know, I'm going to give you a doctorate degree by the end of this. Utmost respect.
So, yeah, here's where I had announcing Mr. Hinton here. We already announced him, and he'll add a ton to this next section. Also want to recognize executive directors who have provided a bunch of information as we put the, the presentation tonight together. They'll play a big part in next week's meeting as well, and specifically to Ms. Rebecca Herbie, who is really the driving force behind the presentation and the visuals that we have this evening. So special thanks to her. So, in the transportation arena, we're, want to differentiate and call out the difference between route time versus ride time. So we have information that outlines changes in the route time, meaning from beginning to end, how long time and distance-wise the bus is traveling. And that's very different than ride time, meaning the specific amount of time that a student, once they get on the bus and then get off the bus, how, how is their ride time impacted? So, and again, another arena where we could dive into the weeds and data till, till the cows come home. But again, we're going to try to keep it at a, maybe not 30,000-foot level, but at least 10 to 15,000-foot level. And Mr. Hinton is here to, to provide some answers to questions if needed. So we'll go ahead and jump into the nitty-gritty. So we'll want to start at a really high overall district level. So top line there, so overall total routes currently, we have 60. That is specifically regular routes. That's not including our special ed routes. So just our regular routes, 60. And with our recommended plan, we would be able to reduce that by two total routes district-wide. So not a huge impact, but there's lots of questions always centered around, well, this is going to increase costs, decrease costs, et cetera, et cetera. Overall, from a district-wide perspective, we're able to slightly decrease those needed routes. So the different metrics that we're looking at, maximum route time district-wide, current to proposed plan, and then the change. So maximum route time, minimum route time, average and median route times, and then after time going to distance, the same metrics in the distance arena. So you can see from a district-wide perspective, slight increase on the max, and then both time and distance, and then very minimal to no change in the other metrics. There's, just say this upfront, there's no way when you're talking, you know, 10, 11, 12,000 students, there's no, there's going to be students that have longer ride times, and there's going to be students that have lower ride times. And, and there's not really a lot you can do. This is really an, an area where, you know, hey, make this simple change, and then it has a ripple domino effect in these other areas. And so we've spent, we've spent a lot of time in the districting, redistricting, and transportation realms, trying to make things as efficient as possible. Obviously, we're still open to input and feedback, and we'll make changes as necessary going forward. These are all draft as well, similar to the, the maps that we looked at, so.
Okay, so taking those same data points for Two Rivers specifically, we will, the current max route time is 51 minutes, and the proposed max route time would be 43 minutes, a savings of eight minutes. The current minimum route time is also 51. So what we're seeing here is that there is one bus, one elementary school bus that does the route for Two Rivers. And so this would be a minimal impact. In fact, students coming from Two Rivers into Weller, the Two Rivers area, Gina Hot Springs to, to Weller as their new school, would have a slightly shorter route time overall than they currently do. And the, the students themselves, there would be an average increase of about three minutes experienced by the students riding.
Little additional context there, in case you're wondering, how did the route shorten, but the ride time increased? The route of, or the, the route traveled by the bus there is actually a shorter route under this new configuration. But the, the time from when the students get on the bus to when they get off the bus at a school that's a little bit farther away slightly goes up. So that's why a shorter overall route, and then increased actual ride time experienced by students. And again, those are averages. So jumping to Midnight Sun Elementary, so again, the same metrics, we're able to keep route numbers at status quo of six routes. The max route time goes down a little bit, as well as the minimum route time, as well as the distances. And then averages are pretty, pretty status quo to current, minimal change. This was a benefit here. This is an example of if, if we had put Ticasic Brown on the closure list, these numbers would be significantly more in the red. Ride times would have increased. In addition to the route time increase, it would have impacted more students because of, the Ticasic Brown students would not all have been able to fit into Midnight Sun, and that would have caused a ripple effect on to North Pole Elementary. So we see, this was one of the big benefits of, of the consolidation of Midnight Sun. So looking a little more granular, kind of a summary of ride times for Midnight Sun. So you see between a six and 10-minute increased ride time on average, again, on average, these are averages. Students going, and those are students going to Ticasic Brown, Ticasic, or Midnight Sun students going to North Pole Elementary, we see a five to six-minute decrease in average ride times.
Hey, taking a look at the Hunter area. So three buses currently serve the Hunter area, and we would still have three buses serving those areas. The current max route time is 18 minutes, or max route, and the proposed max route time would be 23 minutes, so in addition to five minutes. The minimum route time is currently 15 minutes, and it would go to 16 minutes. So that does add one minute to the minimum. And the distance goes from four, five miles max to six miles, and stays at four miles for the minimum. And the experience of the students, students in the Gillum Way to 17th and 23rd Avenue areas, which would have been a former walk zone, will see an average ride time of 20 minutes. So that's an increase because they were previously walking, and now they are riding the bus. Students in the Davis Road area will see an average ride time increase of 10 minutes. That's students that are all going to Denali. Hunter students that would be going to Lad would see an increase of 10 minutes. That's from South Cushman Street, Barmark Street, and Davis Road. And University Park Elementary School, there would be no change to the student ride times.
And then, yeah, just one, Ms. LaPlante mentioned it, the first line, Hunter students to Denali, increase of 20 minutes, that's not taking into consideration the amount of time it takes for those students to walk to their school. So, you know, it's not as if it's zero right now going to 20. We're not taking into consideration the amount of time it takes them to walk to school, so. So on to Pearl Creek, the route impacts there. So currently, we have eight total routes for Pearl Creek Elementary. Under the proposed plan, we'd be able to reduce one route down to seven. The max route time goes up by nine minutes, minimum route time drops by four minutes. And then average and median goes up slightly, four and six minutes respectively. And then you can see the distances pretty, pretty close to status quo there for Pearl Creek. Specific ride time information for Pearl Creek. So students redistricted to Anwee Elementary would, there'd be an average increase of eight minutes for the Auburn Road area, and then for the Farmer's Loop and Summit Drive area, an increase of five minutes. And then the university area would see an average decrease of approximately two minutes. Students going to University Park Elementary would see minimal changes, a small increase, or small increase in the Goldstream area, and then pretty much status quo from Yankovic Road area to University Park. To Weller Elementary School, those students would see no change in the ride time. And then for Wood River, see an increase of about seven minutes in the Murphy Dome Road area, and then an actual decrease of six minutes in the Sheep Creek Road area.
Okay, and then moving to Salcha Elementary School. The max route currently is 55 minutes with three buses. The proposal would have two buses, and the ride time would be 64 minutes, so in addition of nine minutes for the max route. The minimum route would also see an increase of 42 minutes. So we're seeing, this is one of the areas where there's not really a way to change geography. So you do see that impacted here. But previously, Salcha families did experience ride time similar to this for their middle and high school students. So again, this is something that has been experienced by this community. So max distance would be 36 miles, and there's, minimum distance would be 19 miles. So the average student ride time would increase by 20 minutes. Additional ride time changes, Anwee Elementary students to Lad Elementary, because remember, we're not just impacting students from schools that are closing, but students in the Mini Street area would see an average ride time of four minutes increase. And students in the Hamilton Acres and Slater Drive area would see an average ride of a decrease of three minutes. And Denali Elementary School students to Lad would see an increase of two minutes. And Anwee Elementary students would see a decrease of five minutes. Sorry, I took your slide.
For Lad Elementary, so Lad to Arctic Light, students would see about a 10-minute decrease in their travel time. And then to, from U Park Elementary to Wood River, they would see a slight decrease of two minutes on average. And we'll pause for questions.
Mrs. Hardy.
I'm just wondering how we were able to go from five routes in Salcha to two.
So, yeah, let me, let me take a stab at it and go for it.
Just wanted to throw in the disclaimer before you take a stab at it, sir, that the five was a misprint, totally my error, because I was trying to compare apples to apples, and definitely just muddied everything more by including Anderson Crawford's current routes with Salcha's current routes. routes with Salcha's current routes. Because they will, in this scenario, they would all become Anderson Crawford routes in the future, so I was comparing future Anderson Crawford routes with current Anderson Crawford and Salcha routes, but, so there's not actually five Salcha routes, there's three Salcha routes right now. So I'm sorry for muddying the waters, but under, so there, three of those routes, those current Salcha routes, will be combined into two Salcha routes. The reason there's three right now is because we can, we can do three because there's nothing else for that bus to do in the afternoon, because they can't get back from that area back to North Pole in time to run an elementary school in the second tier. So we have available buses to run. So that's the, anticipating the follow-up of why do we have three routes for such a small student population is because, well, why not when we don't have anything else for that bus to do? So we split up some of those ride times. So Salcha's ride times are currently kind of artificially low because we have extra buses to split them up with.
Any other questions from the, Mr. Burgess?
Just, I was just considering the challenges that have come up with transportation, including finding enough drivers for the routes, and so I was just wondering, when you, we have the number of regular routes at sixty going down to fifty-eight, is that actual routes that are, that are running, or is that based on what's planned or hoped for?
Mr. Hinton, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, those are the routes that we need to provide transportation to the schools and neighborhoods.
Yes, sir, it's what we're currently running, so we're, yeah, what we're currently doing, that's sixty.
Mrs. Julian.
Thank you. Is it possible to get the information on the percentage of students at each of these schools that currently ride the bus, and overlay that in here?
Is, is that possible without ridership, membership essentially at the schools? Like, do you understand?
I'm sorry, could she restate the question?
Do we know the percentage of students that ride the bus at, at each of our individual schools?
We do have some ridership numbers, we can, we can put that together. It would take a little bit, but we, at a later date, I could get that to you.
And I just wanted to caution the board, we don't register riders for the buses, and so they won't be exact ridership numbers, but we can get some approximations.
It's more head counts done by the drivers.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm understanding Salcha specifically. I, I think everything else is palatable, everything else really looks fine, you know? The, the average changes, it's not that big of a deal, it's kind of like, okay, we're good with all that. Salcha kind of hits me in the gut, and kind of hurts. So I, I just want to make sure I understand this. I, I don't understand how a minimum route time currently could be thirteen minutes, and then be a hun, or an hour and four. And the proposed time, max route, minimum route, average route, why is it all sixty-four minutes? I'm, I'm not clear on that, because the other numbers are all over the place. So I just don't, I, could we just review Salcha a little bit more closely, so that we can kind of get that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so before Mr. Hinton jumps in, I believe the minimum route time, we, that was another one of our updates as we were combing the data, it's now twenty-two minutes is the minimum. So update, you can update that, and that's reflected on the slide that's up on the board So just to repeat what Mr. Hinton said, and this is a lot of information, so I don't, I don't say that negatively, this is a lot of information, but because of start times, and I believe on Ileson Air Force Base, we had, we needed a certain number of buses in the area, and because of their different start time, they weren't able to get back and do different routes in town and other areas. So they were out in the area, and so we were able to dedicate extra bus or extra buses to the area, which actually, in a sense, artificially decreased ride times for students in the Salcha area. We had more buses dedicated there than what we would normally dedicate to the area because of those unique start times for Ileson. And so that's really a big contributor in the big jump. That's one of the big contributors. Aside from just, as Ms. LaPlante mentioned, geographically, we're eliminating a school in a, in a more remote area. So obviously, there's nothing that can overcome that, that big detail, but it's, it's compounded in a sense in that we had additional buses dedicated to the area because of the start time situation.
I think that, that average distance number is an important one to look at when average distance, thirty-seven miles being traveled, that speaks to that large geographic area that students are often riding at Salcha.
Follow-up, Ms. Carol Hubbard?
I was, but I forgot.
Some, some of the additional ride time for the Salcha students is just to account for them getting onto base as well. So some of that ride time isn't, ride time that they're traveling further, it's just that it, there's a time component to getting on base.
Okay, my follow-up was, how many miles is it from Salcha Elementary to Anderson? I think we, we tried to cover that at one point, I think I asked the same question last time. Do we know how many miles it is from one school to the other?
Mr. Hinton will, will find out and let us know shortly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yeah, one is a request, and then I, I have kind of a question statement. So I just checked, and Board Docs has the document that board members are currently offering off of, which is not what we're seeing on the screen. Can we update and make sure Board Docs has the most current slide deck, so that the public can have the most current information?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then it went all the way back to Mr. Burgess's question about routes, and that we're operating sixty, and I'm running off memory, so it might not be great. Were contracted with them to have ninety or so, or?
Hundred and, hundred and something. Okay, I'm trying to make this as least complicated as possible. We're contracted for a hundred and fifteen routes, but when we talk about routes as what we're contracted for, think of buses. So what that bus is going to do all day. The routes that we're looking at here are the number of what we would more consider runs. So the, like, in a section, so the AM or the PM, one school is one run, unless it's a, like, secondary where it's a shared between two schools, but it's the same run. So a Lathrop Tananol, it's one run. So when we, I've got routes up here, but that's really bus runs. For the most part, most of our elementary schools are in the second tier of a section. So, but while we need sixty runs currently, it doesn't take sixty route buses to do that, because right now, like Lad is in the first tier, Hunter is in the first tier. So that's also something we looked at when, with these consolidations, is that balancing between tiers. And so while we have sixty, sixty bus runs going, it doesn't take sixty buses total to run all of those. But for the elementary, we will need sixty runs, and we are able to reduce the number of runs we need, which does translate to fewer number of routes, because as we're able to reduce those numbers of runs in both tiers, that, that route goes away.
Kind of related, now that I'm understanding runs and routes, and so we're contracted for over a hundred routes with our current contractor.
We are contracted for a hundred and fifteen.
A hundred and fifteen, but it sounds like if they were able to staff all of those routes, that would be far more than we actually need to run our, our bus system.
I mean, yes, like, we, we've proven that we can do it with a lot less, we've had to do it with a lot less, but if we could get more routes, if we can, because we're always looking to staff up. But that means shorter ride times, that, those are those, those longer routes that we can split up if we can add more routes. So as our route count increases, we're able to split up those congested routes and the longer ride time routes. The, we're able to add service into certain areas that we weren't before. There's a lot of stuff that, you know, we're able to do, but, you know, as we pare back, when we're constrained by route count, the, the sixty is where we're, we're currently at. That's what, what routes look like right now.
You can follow-up. Yep, go ahead.
So, sorry, as I'm processing, learning more about transportation, we historically run transportation at a deficit. Is that true if we're running transportation at sixty routes? So no matter what, we would run it at a bigger deficit that we're contracted, because I'm seeing Mr. DeGraw shake his head for everyone listening online. So still, our transportation funding is not adequate, even for our reduced streamlined longer routes.
Correct.
So we have Mrs. Julian next, but I'd like to throw myself in real quick, just in reference to something Ms. Carol Hubbard said. So with these Salcha routes, when you look at Anderson versus North Pole, really what you're getting into there is that entrance time onto Ileson, which makes those really kind of equal when it comes to travel and such. And these bus times are also not just the route itself or the stops, it's that access getting past the gate and getting back into the school, because we all know that's like, what, two miles back there? So just for clarification for the public, the time is that travel time on base as well.
Yes, and to that point exactly, students in the Salcha area that now go to North Pole, middle and high, instead of Ben Ileson, are experiencing nearly identical ride times because of that fact.
Mrs. Julian.
Thank you, I have a two-part question. How much of a deficit are we running our transportation costs currently at?
It's right in the three-point-five-million-dollar range.
So we have to, we're subsidizing that, how?
Right now, we're using transportation fund, fund balance to do that.
Okay. So then the question, rhetorical question, is that if we were to have targeted funding for education, that would be adequate, funding for transportation that would be adequate, wouldn't run us a deficit and might even allow us to staff up and, to the, to more routes than we currently offer, would that decrease average ride time for students?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board at the moment? Seeing none? Back to you, Mrs. LaPlante.
Right, thank you. So the next part here is we're going to get into repurposing buildings, and we're going to, I want to bring us back to this consolidation framework, because the first parts of the consolidation framework were to look geographically at which, at regions, and determine if, within a region, if there was to be a school closed, which school would make the most sense for a variety of reasons. And with all that, you also look at the state of the building, cost savings, neighborhood impacts, you look, you looked at all those impacts. At none of this point did we talk about really, you know, it wasn't that we look at, oh, we need to use a building for some other purpose. All of that conversation flows after we've already determined that we need to close a building, and in which area would make the most sense for students, the ride times, they have the capacity for them at other schools, keeping programs as intact as possible. So this is going to go into, once we've determined that a school is closing, how do we do the next best thing? So, can you?
Yeah, so options, we have three main options for, so as Ms. LaPlante described, we first determine that a school closure is our recommendation, and then the second step is determining disposal, what do we do with the building? So there's three main options available to the school district. One is to return the school to the borough. Ultimately, the borough is the owner of the buildings. The school district could also retain the building and mothball it. That wouldn't necessarily be a very cost-effective thing to do at this point for the district to do. And then the third option is for the district to retain the building and then use it for other educational options and offerings, but at a lower cost than having to acquire, basically utilizing excess space for added benefits for our school district and students. I want to reinforce what Ms. LaPlante just described a moment ago. We've, we've heard a narrative trending throughout the community that administration is closing buildings in order to provide space for best or charter schools, and that that tail is wagging the dog, and it's not. The district and administration first determined how many schools to close. We determined where based on geography, and that decision was mutually exclusive, completely one-hundred percent, from what then do we do with the buildings after we've determined which ones we're going to recommend to close. And so any kind of narrative that we are closing buildings for the purpose of repurposing them, and that's the reason why, those are false statements.
So when we think about why we might repurpose a building, first is to answer that question, is there a less expensive use for the building that would still benefit students? Is there something that we can do that would help our district, help our students? We want to also preserve the ability to grow. We hope that our community grows in the future. We know that that would be an economic benefit to our entire community, and so we want to have that ability to grow should that happen. So maintaining a school building in the North Pole area, Midnight Sun retaining the building that we currently have with Nordeale, that allows us to grow should that opportunity come our way. Possible financial benefits, is there a way to use it to generate revenue? We heard earlier today about, you know, renting out the building for sports and other, you know, programs in our community. Maybe there's a way to, to use a building for those purposes. Also, it retains a valuable asset. These are buildings that have a lot of emotional value and physical value, and so it keeps it within our ability to use, provides space for future programs, maybe even daycares, preschools, things like that, and it provides an opportunity for alternative education programs. So all of these things are things that we would consider, and our proposal is what we're going to share with you.
All right, thank you. So nineteen-point-five miles from Salcha Elementary to Anderson Crawford Elementary, nineteen-point-five. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. So regarding the district's repurposing recommendations, as well as other options, so our recommendation is to repurpose Midnight Sun Elementary for the purpose of a few different items, housing the Star of the North program, which their lease was recently vacated in the North Pole area, housing a smart location that would serve the North Pole area, and then a best satellite also to serve the, the North Pole area. Additionally, it's, it's possible there could be some special ed services that we would make available, child find, things of that nature. And again, to my previous point, the repurpose of a, of a building in the North Pole area was not a determining factor of whether or not to close, to recommend closing a building in the North Pole area. We determined that in 3A in the framework, we determined that we were able to recommend the closure based on capacities and other factors. Three years ago, when we went through the first round of consolidations, we were unable to at that point. We looked at North Pole, and we were unable to based on enrollments and capacities at that time. We re-looked at it this time around, and we were able to do that. But to repurpose the building had zero impact on the determination to actually recommend a closure in the North Pole area. So other options that we are putting forth as possibilities would be, as was mentioned earlier, Pearl Creek and Hunter Elementary offering those, and as has been noted, is found in state statute, to offer them right of first refusal for use of those buildings, and then also creating best satellite locations in the Salcha and/or Two Rivers area. And though, in that situation, we would have best staff that would, would staff those buildings and, and man them to keep them open and available to those communities. So as far as, there's been a lot of talk about repurposing and what is the budget impact, so this is, it's really not a long list of costs that it requires to maintain a repurposed building, approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars on an annual basis. That's a combination of ongoing utility and custodial costs, and then whenever we do repurpose a building, it's possible that there are some retrofitting costs associated with that. And then whenever we do repurpose a building, it's possible that there are some retrofitting costs associated with that. We, we estimated certain amounts three years ago with the Nordale Education Center. It turns, I believe we, we estimated somewhere in the 20,000 range and it was one tenth of that is what it actually took. So those costs are never significant, depending on your plans. If, if the plans changed and we had more aggressive, ambitious plans for retrofitting the building, obviously those costs would go up. But as it stands now, we don't anticipate those to be, to be large. One other thing I want to address, um, there has been talk, and Dr. Minor mentioned this in his talking points. I just want to reinforce his, his point as well. There's been a lot of talk of, of vacating this building here downtown. And it's very important to note that there would be no savings in doing that. There would actually, the contrary, there would be significant costs associated with that. Some items were mentioned, creating spaces for, you know, the staff here at this building to be dispersed around the district. What wasn't mentioned was we have significant server infrastructure in this building that would be extremely expensive to co, to relocate out in other, other locations. Whether we built our own or rented, rental rates are astonishingly high. Like everything else, it's shocking how much it, it costs to rent server space from different vendors out in the community. So easily would run into the millions of dollars of upfront one-time costs to do that. And then there are no ongoing savings to closing this building. Eighty, ninety percent of the, of the, and we've gone through this, I think we went through it last time, the staff savings, position savings that come with consolidating a school building would not be realized if we were to vacate this downtown center. We would still need the staff that are here, virtually all of the staff, if we were to vacate this building. So there wouldn't be fixed staffing or duplicative staffing savings if we were to close the downtown center. So can't stress enough that A, it would not save any dollars and B, it would cost us into the millions of dollars to relocate, um, this building. And those are dollars obviously we don't have, so. And then lastly, for this section, uh, again, repeating the timeline that we talked about last time. So July 1st, 2025 would be the target, target date for closing the attendance area schools that administration has recommended. As far as returning buildings to the borough, and this is a rough estimate, obviously subject to change, but acknowledging that the number of schools we're talking about would, is going to be a tall order for the district to, to handle all at once, would not be possible. Twenty-five, twenty-six year would be targeted for Salcha and Two Rivers to be returned. And again, this is if there's no repurpose or no repurpose that is, is identified for any of these buildings. Then twenty-six, twenty-seven school year would be Pearl Creek Elementary and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight year for Hunter Elementary. And again, that's very rough timeline and subject to change at any point, so.
Okay, with that, um, I saw Mrs. Hardy and then Mrs. Julian.
Um, and I have a couple, so feel free to space me out. Part of it, just to piggyback off what Mr. DeGraw was saying, I've heard a couple of things like, well, this is a very valuable piece of property. We could sell the ADC and make money, except it's not our property. It's given to us by the borough. The borough owns the property. If we were to hand it back to them, they could sell it and they could reap those costs or that, but we can't. And they very generously give us this property for free. That is because we're all public entities, so that's just not, not going to save us, uh, any money. And then to the other piece about, um, using schools versus returning them and when we return them, we're all borough taxpayers and we've, we received, uh, communications from the mayor's office asking us not to return all five schools at once, because just like we know with Eilson and other places, when they come off our rolls, they go to the borough. And the borough is then responsible for the maintenance entirely and all of the utilities, because you can't just mothball a building, pipes can explode, things can happen. You have to winterize buildings in Fairbanks. So scaling it back allows the whole other governmental system that we're all funding as well to be able to take on the, the brunt of that and working in partnership with our borough, because we're all living in this town together. Um, and I did have one question, but.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, to that same piece with the Star of the North, and I know the board had this information, but making sure the public does. We aren't renewing their lease, so they need a new home. But about how much was it costing us? And they're a program, so we were already going to be paying that to rent that building.
Yeah, their lease was about 175,000 annually.
I have Mrs. Julian.
Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to request that the administration on the timeline to return buildings to the borough slide, add a disclaimer on their, um, I think, uh, Ms. Laplante, last meeting you or at the work session, you, you said you added the disclaimer that this is not the timeline for closure of those schools. And I think it's really important that we add that disclaimer there so that people understand that's the timeline to hand it back. I know it says it at the top, but just another reiteration there on that slide would be, um, helpful to the public, because you immediately look at there and if you're not looking at the, what it says, you go, oh, that school's not closing until 26, 27. So, um, and then another thing that I'd like to ask is, um, to add a definition of mothballing to the options for building for the public to see. You know, we, we know what that means, but I'd like to have that definition of exactly what that means when we're talking about it.
Mrs. Julian, Mr. DeGraw would like to respond real fast.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, we can, we'll add that, just, and I don't know what the Webster's dictionary definition is. What, what we mean is close the building as a school, shut the lights off, turn the heat down to 50 degrees and it's going to sit for a while, but we haven't turned it back to the borough. And we're, we would then, you know, do checks and make, make sure that, you know, any catastrophe doesn't happen. But that's, that's our definition of mothballs.
Yeah, thank, thank you. That would be helpful for the.
Continue, Ms. Julian.
Thank you. Um, and this is going to be a statement, not necessarily a question, but a statement as to why this is difficult to stomach, this part of this presentation. We talk about repurposing and the budgetary impacts. And we talk about the first right of refusal for, um, schools of choice for those buildings, should we choose to close them. And I think that what's really difficult, uh, for the community as well as, you know, even myself, when you're looking at a school in particular, um, Pearl Creek and Hunter, that have deed capacities of 548 students and 494 students, giving first right of refusal, even though it would, might bring us some revenue, which it would, maybe not what they're paying to the private leasing company, but it would, it would provide some revenue. I think the hardest thing for the community that I've heard is that leasing those schools to schools that choose to limit their class sizes and cap them and also not offer the same robust services that our neighborhood schools offer, that's a hard thing to stomach. And so I just want to make that statement publicly, because I've heard that. I also understand the numbers and understand the statute, so, thank you.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. Um, I want to make a statement, then I also will have an unrelated question. But, um, I really appreciate that, uh, this thoughtful timeline for returning buildings to the borough. I hope that the borough sees it as, um, you know, a, a measure of good faith in working together as a part, in partnership. Particularly because, you know, it's a little concerning, having seen some of the, um, a, a recent news article and other statements from the borough mayor stating that he, they might need to take that money out of the education funding, uh, that the borough provides to us if we turn over a lot of buildings. So I hope that, that, that the mayor takes that into consideration when he proposes his budget to the Borough Assembly and sees this as working in good faith. And I also want to note that the cost of running a school obviously is much more expensive than, um, handling it for utilities for a few years while we try to find a way to repurpose it, while the borough tries to find a way to repurpose or sell it. So that's my statement. Secondly, uh, I was, you know, I, I know that the majority of the board has heard about Star of the North and SMART in some presentations last year. We do have a couple of new board members and I'm not sure that the public is up to speed on all those programs. So if we could get a summary of what Star of the North, North does and why it's important as well as SMART. And then I'm also wondering for the, for using Midnight Sun for the SMART program, would that be moving the entire program?
Uh, that would not be moving the entire program. And so, uh, that would be in, in addition to the program that we have in Fairbanks. Uh, we have some grant funding to stand up one teacher out in North Pole, uh, which is, um, a great addition for the North Pole community. Oftentimes our students that, uh, are on long-term suspensions or are expelled in North Pole don't have the transportation to come into town. And so oftentimes those students transition to, uh, correspondence programs or drop out entirely. And, um, there was an effort last year, if you remember, in the budget conversations to provide transportation for SMART students to Nordale. That hasn't materialized because of our challenges in the transportation realm. Um, and so we're really, really hopeful, uh, to be able to offer this for some of our most at-risk students in North Pole, that this will be a great advantage to keeping them on track and track, um, and hopefully pointed towards graduation. And then, um, in terms of, uh, your SMART programs, um, your Star of the North programs, we'll go into more detail about that next week, uh, when we present to the board. If we could, if we're willing to hold off on that and, uh, talking about those programs in more detail.
Thanks, that's fair.
I'm just going to throw myself in, um, real quick. I just wanted to kind of go off of Dr. Minor's comments with the SMART program. I actually think this is a really great thing for the North Pole area to have, considering nine times out of 10, when we do have a student out in that area, they, it, it is hard for them to get into town to access the SMART program at Nordale. So the, I think that this is a great solution considering our transportation issues. So I just wanted to make that statement. Is there any other comments from the board right now?
Seeing none? Oh, Mrs. Julian.
Thank you. I have another question about, um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, it's completely blinking for me right now. Um, the bonds on, on school buildings. How many of school buildings do we have right now that carry bonds? If, if you're able to answer that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, we actually just had a great meeting with the mayor and his staff today to talk about, uh, repurposing and the handback of buildings. And so, um, as we're talking about this, as Mr. DeGraw said, subject to change based on, um, needs in the community and, uh, ways that we're working together with, uh, the borough. And so, uh, currently the schools, uh, that do not have bonds on them are Denali, Effie, Hunter, Nordale, North Pole Elementary, Randy Smith, Anne Wean, Arctic Light, Anderson Crawford and Hutchison High School, as well as the ADC building, the nutritional services building and the maintenance warehouse. So, um, a few more than, uh, what we had discussed previously. Uh, we gained some new information in our meeting today with the mayor's office. And I, and I want to point out, uh, past administrations, and I believe, um, the current administration's thought is, uh, for the school board to make its decision based on schools and the borough will work through the bond process. Uh, Mayor Hopkins does have an upcoming meeting with the bond council. And so he'll gain some additional information that he'll then bring to the school board, um, at our regular meeting on the 21st. So we'll hear more about that process and the impacts on the borough.
Mrs. Julian.
Thank you. I just, um, wanted to see if, from a, from a budgetary standpoint, and again, this goes back to having the repurposing of buildings conversation coupled with the consolidation. It, it's, that one's real hard for me, um, because it's really emotional to see a potential school closure and then repurposing it for something else. And I think that's what's fueling a lot of these conversations in the community. And, and of course, it's, it's even difficult for me as a board manager, member to manage those, those competing narratives. Is it necessary for us to make decisions around repurposing buildings at the same time that we make decisions around school consolidations?
Uh, no, it's not. And I'm not sure, you know, depending on how the board feels about it, if it's, um, a school board action item in general. So my recommendation to the board would be to take action on the recommended plan of consolidation. And then the board would show its priorities of, um, reutilizing buildings through the budgetary process. And so it wouldn't necessarily, um, go together. And I acknowledge, uh, the difficult aspect of having them both before you. Many of us have been at this table, this is our third round of consolidations. And the administration was criticized in the past for not having a plan for buildings. And so we wanted to be really clear and transparent about what we thought might be a good plan for buildings. But obviously we'll have more discussions, um, as a school district and as a board, um, about how that works. And we've also, um, aware of the borough's concerns in the past of not, uh, turning over large amounts of buildings all at one time, um, because that, that can be a negative impact, um, on their budget. And so just wanted the information to be out there and additional conversations or decisions on repurposing can be made down the line.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Laplante, Mr. DeGraw, continue.
All right, so transitioning into the staff impact, we will.
All right, so we've talked about, um, the impact to the, the transportation and to buildings. Now we're going to talk about staff. And again, next week, we'll, or two weeks from now, we'll be talking specifically about students. But this, tonight, we're going to talk about staff. So at the schools that are, uh, proposed and recommended, recommended to close, this is, this shows the number of support staff at each building, the number of teachers, FEA, and the principals. This is, uh, the numbers of actual people who are filling these roles. We may actually have vacancies that, um, that are greater than this, because we haven't been able to fill every, every position that we want. But this is the actual number of employees that are currently at those schools that would be impacted by their work location, um, closing and being, needing to transfer to a different work location in our district. Most of the, the teachers would, the, the educational staff would flow along with the students to the schools where, um, enrollment would grow. So that would, uh, take care of most of our teachers.
Just, and to wrap up that last slide, just a little bit of context for everyone, 158 total. It's kind of important to, Ms. Laplante mentioned this, I just want to back it up. Staff impacted means both position reduced as well as your position is moving, as she mentioned. So it's both. It's not necessarily 158 positions lost. The estimated positions reduced is about half of that for the five schools, so. And then the remaining half, as Ms. Laplante mentioned, would be mainly classroom staff following students, as we talked about before, to the next school.
And to build on that, we have, um, such a high need for support staff in our district. We have vacancies and positions that have gone unfilled that, um, you know, we want to maintain a positive working relationship with our support staff. We want them with our district and we feel that we would be able to, um, you know, create opportunities for, for most everybody that wants to be with us. So, um, we're very hopeful that people will want to continue working with us.
This next slide is a repeat of a slide we had last week. Just wanted to reinforce it, as it is a staffing impact. These are the position reductions that, and I just talked about this about 10 minutes ago, referring to this building here. This, this really is an illustration of why there's, there, there are savings when we close a school. There aren't these types of staffing positions in this building. So these are fixed staffing positions or duplicative. So if we have, if we have four, if we have 1,000 students spread out between four schools, we're consolidating those 1,000 students down to three schools. The positions here listed in that one school that's closed, we're able to reduce. And that's where the savings that we illustrate, the $7 million total savings, that's where the vast majority of those savings comes from, is these positions. And there just aren't these types of positions in this building, right? If we can close down the ADC, but we still need our accounting department, we still need our human resources department, we still need the technology. our human resources department, we still need the technology department, et cetera, et cetera. So that's just, again, for informational purposes, the types of positions that are not, classroom instructional staff follow the students, these positions are examples of ones that are able to be reduced. And then, let me take this one. So anecdotally, and again, as Dr. Minert mentioned, this isn't the first time around that we've consolidated schools. Our hope, while we can't guarantee anything, we can never guarantee anything, but our past experience shows that through retirements, existing vacancies, as Ms. Laplante mentioned, and resignations, that the vast majority of the time, we're able to have positions for people, hopefully in their current job class, the same thing that they're doing now. But if not, possibly maybe a move to a different position type. But our hope is that we will have positions for the vast, vast majority, if not all, the folks that are displaced, affected, impacted by these closures. Again, obviously, we can't guarantee anything. The point in time where we'll start to get clarity on that is, A, when the proposed budget, Dr. Minert will put forth his proposed budget, middle of February, and then the board will work that budget. By the end of March, they will be coalescing, you guys will be coalescing around the recommended budget. And that's where we'll start to have a lot of clarity in the Human Resources Department. They do a ton of work on, you know, finding positions for folks, you know, seniority and the different bargaining units comes into play. And by that latter half of March is when we start to see a lot of clarity. And, you know, staff wants answers as soon as possible, get that. And so we do our best to try to get that work done as quickly as possible to provide certainty for our staff. So when the budgets come out, that's when we really start to see clarity, especially that recommended budget, when the board's making final decisions on their end. Hopefully, that makes sense. Our intent is to have positions for everyone and reduce the job loss impact as much as possible.
And talking about that process for transferring students, our teachers to positions, we're working with our labor unions on a transition process that will support our educators and our principals and hopefully alleviate as many barriers as possible. So we're trying to make a streamlined process for that. And we already have an agreement of a retirement extension for FEA and are working with a similar agreement for ESSA. So those are things that we've done in the past with school closures to allow our employees to make a little bit more of an informed choice and not feel so up against deadlines that might have already passed. So those are things that we're doing. And that brings us to the end of this section. Next week, or, I'm sorry, two weeks from now, January 27th. Next week, we have a three-day weekend. Next week, Monday, we're not, we all get to have off. So January 27th, we will be talking specifically about how all of this will create the educational landscape for students across our district with special education, teaching and learning, Title I, support plan, special programs perhaps. And then also, we'll be looking at what we, if this decision is made and voted on, what we will be doing for students following that decision to support them this spring. So that's what we'll be getting into on January 27th. But this concludes this presentation, but we are, of course, available for questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Laplante and Mr. DeGraw for the presentation. And with that, Mr. Burgess.
Just a couple of questions on these last few slides about staff. First, and I might have a, probably will have a follow-up after this, but could you just, you know, you said there's, you've agreed to retirement extensions with FEA. Can you just explain what retirement extensions are? What that means?
And I'm happy to report that we actually came to an agreement with ESSA just this afternoon, so we have both in place. So currently, there's a deadline for people to, our staff, to provide their notice of retirement to receive the stipend. January 15th is for our teachers and FEA. And there's different timelines, whether you're a school term or a year-long, 12-month employee for ESSA. And so we've extended that so that if they're impacted by the school closure, that they still have time to provide their notice of retirement and receive the retirement stipend. And we came to an agreement with both FEA and ESSA, and that was already included in the FPA contract, so all three bargaining units are covered now.
Thank you. I have two others, but you can...
Mrs. Hardy says, go ahead.
Okay. When we're talking about transferring staff, I know that ordinarily, there's a process called an involuntary transfer. But I understand also there's some administrative burden that comes with that, especially when you're dealing with lots of staff. But I just want to ask, because I've heard that with last year's closure of Ben Ileson, some staff had to apply for jobs at other schools. Are we going to, are our staff going to have to apply for their, for a job at a different school?
So to speak to last year's transferring, we followed contractual language that's negotiated with unions, and so we followed the contract. But we have come, to not come to the table, we've gotten together collaboratively, and while still following contract language, we're trying to remove burdens and support staff throughout, through this process and making it less burdensome. And so some of the things that we're looking at is not using frontline necessarily for FEA to manage the process, not having such laborious interviews for each position. And so I can't speak at great detail in terms of the direction that we're headed, but we've had two very productive meetings with FEA and ESSA, and I think we're getting really close in terms of a process that we can share with staff. And we're really hopeful that by February 4th, when the decision is made, that we'll say this is the process that we've all agreed to, FEA, ESSA, and FPA, in terms of the way that we'll go about supporting staff and the transferring to other buildings. And so it will be different in the past, but I think we'll still be able to adhere to the negotiated language in our contracts.
Quick follow-up, and then I have one more. Is there a way, and this, this may be, this may be too big of a challenge, but is there a way that student, that teachers will be able to follow their students, especially when we're talking about rural schools where they're just going to, you know, just moving to one other school building?
I think one of the, a couple of the big things that we've heard from FEA that teachers want is to show some kind of preference on schools that they would like to transition to. And so we're trying to acknowledge that, as well as they would, they would like us to acknowledge seniority within FEA as well. And so there hasn't been a lot of conversations about, you know, placing teachers at schools where their students are going. I see where you're going with that, and that certainly would be one way that you could approach that, but that's not something that we've currently discussed with FEA.
And my thought is that that would be a, potentially a helpful support for students. And then I do have one more, but someone else is welcome to.
Why don't we come back? Go ahead, Mrs. Hardy, we'll let you get a couple in.
I just have the one, and it's more, I've heard Mr. DeGraw say a lot of times that positions at ADC, you know, we need all these, and that is absolutely true. But we're at, we've segmented our budget process into these pieces. And so right now, we're doing school consolidations. But there is a massive piece coming up that's, as much as we cut last year, still left to cut. And there is a very good likelihood that ADC will take cuts as part of that process. And so it's not that it's this protected thing that we're not cutting from, we're not there yet. And $6 million, like, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's about what we cut last year. So as painful, and that was painful, to sit up there and find those cuts, we still have that left to look forward to. It's catastrophic. This is the amount that we are being forced to trim from our budget. And so trust us when we say this is not, not over yet, and the cuts will come and they will be felt by everybody.
Mr. DeGraw.
Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Hardy's comment. She's read my mind several times in the, in the years, and she did again, as I finished my comments just five minutes, I was like, oh, there might have been an impression that, you know, there's no fixed staff or duplicative staff, so there won't be any reduction. There very well will and can be administrative reductions, again, just like there have been every year since I've been here in the district. And, you know, over, over the last, I can't remember the timeframe that we were looking at last year, but it was a 20, in excess of 20% cut to administration that we were presenting last year, and that will just continue to go up. So the difference being is that oftentimes, the services that those admin staff are providing oftentimes will then have to go away or just reduced to a point to where they become ineffective. And, you know, the good news is, you know, in the school consolidation realm, you know, you see the different positions there. Those services will still be offered at the schools where students go. Not that school consolidation is ideal, I don't want people to misconstrue what I'm saying here. But that's why we've said we feel the education will actually improve, you know, the product that we'll be able to offer, because we have vacancies and whatnot, where a lot of these, in certain arenas, these services aren't being provided. So I appreciate the thought, and Ms. Hardy hit it spot on, that does not mean that there won't be administrative reductions found in our budgets going forward. So appreciate the thought.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. That's absolutely right. We still have a long way to go with this budget, and so nothing is off this table. Up next, Mr. Burgess.
So, thanks again. The, the last question I had was going back to the staff impacted slide. I just noticed that Hunter has a lot more support staff listed compared to other schools, even if you're comparing ratios to teachers. And I'm assuming that a big portion of that is because of Title I funding. Okay. And so feel free to save this for next time when we're talking about Title I. But, but I am interested in understanding, you know, what happens to that Title I funding if we split up Hunter? And will it potentially follow the students, or will it not?
Yeah, so title funding will be distributed to all of our title schools. And it's interesting to note that actually, we will have more students being able to be served at title schools. We have, Salchow is, Pearl Creek students would be flowing to U Park, which is a title school, some would be flowing to Anne Ween, which is a title school. And Pearl Creek is currently not a title school, but those students would begin benefiting from the services that are offered at a title school. Midnight Sun is not a title school, but Tikkisak Brown is a title school, has an after-school program. So we have additional students that would be able to receive those services. And all of our Hunter students would be going to schools that either are title or military-supported, so have additional services at LAD for military. And same thing with Anderson Crawford has additional services for being in military. So we actually feel like most of our students will be flowing to schools where there's more services than, or either equal to or more services than they currently have. And as the financial revenue for title schools is dispersed to our title schools, to the title schools, they would be able to utilize that money to provide kinds of additional staffing. So we'll give guidance on that, and we will go into more detail on that. But you're absolutely right, there is more staffing there because of title, and we would see that dispersed out to the schools.
Mrs. Dulean.
Thank you. It might be helpful, I'm not sure, but to know the number of, in the elementary grade band, the number of teachers that are emergency certs, and also the number of J-1 visas, if that's possible?
That is possible. I'm curious of your line of thought, why you might think that's helpful. And the only reason I bring that up is because emergency certification teacher and J-1 visas are a part of FEA and enjoy the same contractual rights as other teachers. And so, you know, we would be following the same transition plans for those staff members.
Okay, now then disregard. Thank you.
Any other que, oh, Ms. Carol Hubbard.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to comment to both of you, actually to everybody here, thank you so much. You guys, the information that you're providing to us is very thorough. There's just so much in here. And Mrs. Laplante, you have a way of just, like, sprinkling a silver lining, and I so appreciate that because, and thank you for giving me the right numbers, because it isn't quite so painful for Salchow. The initial numbers that I saw were brutal, and that hurt, but I'm glad I was corrected. So thank you for that. But I know this is terrible, what we have to do, but it seems like it's, could be doable. And you guys are doing a great job giving, like, I kind of have hope in the midst of the pain. So thank you, everybody, for all of this. Appreciate it.
Just like to throw myself in real quick. Going back to Mr. Burgess's comments, I would just like to support what Mr. Burgess was saying when it comes to our educators and our teachers through FEA and ESSA and all of that, that we just try to do what we can to make this as easy of a transition as possible. I do see this as a forced transition that we are putting upon them, and I know that it's no fault of anybody's, but we are here. And so to make any step that we can easier for our staff, I would be in support of. So thank you very much. Is there any other questions from the board? Mrs. Dulean?
I'd like to make a recommendation to the administration that, and I thank you for adding the slide about neighborhood school enrollment changes at the beginning. I think it's equally important to add that at the end, because as much as this is a budgetary consideration, we also are looking at this. And I was a member of the public last year, listening to these conversations around delaying these decisions so that the community had more time to process and the administration had more time to plan and get impact, input, I'm sorry, on a, on a recommendation. So if we could revisit, again, that enrollment change, I think that's really important to note.
We can do that for future presentations? Yep.
Anything further from the board? Mrs. Hardy? Oh, oh, Mrs. Laplante, I don't, I didn't see who he was pointing to, I'm sorry.
Andy's like, go say something positive. So it's not without, or it's with great purpose and intention that we identified this presentation as rightsizing and revitalizing. And Ms. Herbert, Hubbard, Hubbard, I'm sorry. I agree with the word "hope." I mean, that's the word that has been going through my mind all night and leading up to this, is that I actually have incredible hope that doing this very, very difficult work, which we all feel incredibly and have a ton of empathy around, will be one of the steps that we can take to revitalize our schools. I've been part of this district for 23 years now. I've spent 10 of those years as a principal, many of those years as a principal, and certainly all my years in this role, I have participated in significant cuts, and I've seen programs that I know benefit students, have to be reduced and reduced and reduced until the point where they disappear entirely. We have so many things that we would like to be doing for students, and I have a lot of hope that this very difficult work will be the first step in reversing that pattern. And as we can bring back the things that people look to public school to provide that they really want for their children, that they will come back to our district, and we will grow, and so will the health of our community. So thank you for your kind words. I also have hope, and I think that this is an important step.
Anything else from the board at this time? Seeing nothing further? We are adjourned.